Good evening, everybody. This is September 1, my gosh, September 1, 2020. And I think I heard that we're beyond the end of meteorological summer now, so I guess we're in the fall. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, and let me start by the emergency notice. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting is of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. And we'll start our meeting with our usual disclosure that the meeting is being video recorded, and that we want to take a moment of appreciation for the troops that are serving us around the world. Thank you. And there was a discussion just before the meeting about how people can ask questions. Chris, can you, if people want to ask questions, is there, can they raise their hand? Or how do, is there a good way for you to get the questions?
The best way to do that is if you have a question during an item is to use the Q and A box, and then you can read those questions out. We have had a request from a resident tonight that they'd be allowed to actually speak at the meeting versus using the Q and A box, and we will do that after Mr. Quinnlin provides his update at Dale Street School.
Okay. And so our first appointment is with Mike Quinnlin, update on Dale Street School building project.
Actually, we, actually, before I promote Mike, we had a small revision to the agenda today. We're going to let Chief Garrett go first. She's going to do just one minor household item we need to get.
Okay. Welcome, Chief. Thank you for coming.
Just got her on there. There we go. Hi, good evening.
Oh, that's a much nicer looking place than I'm in.
Actually, I'm at a friend's house for dinner tonight, so.
Nice.
Thank you for squeezing me in. I appreciate it. I know it's last minute. It really is just kind of a cleaning things up. We have spoken previously about our fifth and final candidate, Francis Tiths. He is the Millis resident who has since moved into Medfield. He was actively deployed with the Marines during the civil service process, which makes him eligible for our town. He has successfully completed the entire process and is due to start the academy September 14th. So I'm requesting approval of him as a recruit candidate.
What's his name again?
Francis Tiss.
Thank you. Any questions, Gus?
I do not. No questions.
No questions.
Do we have a motion then?
I would move that we appoint Francis Tiss to the position of police recruit effective on his start date at the police academy.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Thank you. That will round out our five vacancies, so we should be at full staffing by the beginning of next year.
Pete, thank you so much for coming. Have a good dinner.
Thank you, Chief.
And now, next we'll go to Mike Quinnlin for the update on the Dale Street.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if she always wears her police chief jacket to her friends' houses for dinner.
Some things will always remain a mystery, I'm sure.
I was just wondering what's for dinner. Might have to stop by later if it's good.
It's a little hard to pinpoint the location from the photo, but I see where you are, Mike. You're in front of the Dale Street School.
You don't have GPS on the police chief?
From that spot, you could be sitting on a police car, Mike.
She's the one that's in charge of the GPS.
I'm gonna make sure she has, she gets that arranged. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here. I did want to just come and give you guys a quick update as we've got some significant things that have happened already and a few things that will be happening over the next few weeks. And really talk through some of the process of how we're going to reach some decisions in the next couple of weeks. So you probably already know that last week on Thursday evening, the school committee voted unanimously to support the superintendent's recommendation that the project pursue only a four or five configuration. The smaller two options that we've been exploring since the beginning of this project. I just want to thank Jeff and the school committee. I think that they've taken a very sort of realistic approach to this as much as they still believe that three to five configuration is best educationally. A lot of things have changed since this project began, and I believe they're taking a thoughtful and logical approach to this decision. And that they're making a smart choice and it was best for the town here. I also originally sort of felt that the three to five was, was more favorable, but given everything that's changed since the beginning of this project with COVID and just where the town is on some of the things like water treatment plants, et cetera. This is probably the best decision that we can make at this time. And it's still, despite it being a little bit less strategic, shall we say, it still provides us with a project, a potential project that solves a lot of problems that would still contain growth from schools. And so it's not a good versus bad decision, a black versus white. This is just sort of making a little bit of a compromise due to where the town is and the economy is and trying to think strategically as possible based on where we are. So you know, that's sort of where, where we came down with the great configuration. And I'll stay in on a few more things if, if you want to hear that before we go to questions from the, from the board. So the next steps moving forward, the SBC has been working on site evaluation. As we look at the, the two sites, that's been ongoing for months. We've held public forums. We've gotten tons of feedback from the community. And each individual SBC members are now providing feedback to our OPE to start the data and preparation for next week, which is when we expect to vote on a recommendation for what we call a preferred schematic. So we've been exploring multiple options, and as you know, we've whittled them down more and more. Certainly whittling down the great configuration will help to bring that to a smaller list as well. So we expect that on Wednesday evening next week, that the SBC will review all options on the table and make a vote to recommend an option to the Board of Selectmen for their approval. As the SBC, we, we report to the Board of Selectmen and we are here to recommend an approach for it to vote on. So the intent was to have that voted on by the Board of Selectmen on the 15th. My understanding is that there's some potential scheduling staff who's that will need to be worked, worked out is availability may not be full for that. I think it's, it's a critical vote for the Board of Selectmen, so we really want to arrange that at a time when all three of you can be present. So I know Christine's working on getting that scheduled. Just a quick update on budget, because everybody always wants to know about money. Obviously, these are critical, critical decisions as we enter this, this major capital project. And we have gone through our preferred schematic report pricing in August. And I'll give you the ranges and I'll include the three to five ranges just for reference. And so the three to five project costs, so this is construction cost plus all of the soft costs, et cetera. So this would be soup and nuts. Project costs are estimated on all of the options in a range of 89.7 to 95.6 million for the three to five. For the four to five configurations, the estimates are coming in right now for project cost of about 72.1 million to about 77.3 million. These are rounded numbers and they'll change drastically. I trust it, it's just a chance to change frequently up and down as we get, go through this process, but probably in a fairly narrow range. So those are kind of where we're, where we, we're coming in. If we are pursuing this four to five option that does bring us down in the, into the 72 to 77 million dollar range, and we'll continue to make some decisions about what's included in those costs. I will say at this stage, at the preferred schematic stage, it's best to include in the budget, things that we think may or may not be considered. We tend to be conservative at this stage. There are also, as discussed previously, two forms of procurement methods, Chapter 149 and Chapter 149A, otherwise known as design bid build and construction manager at risk. So construction manager at risk tends to have a higher premium upfront. Basically, you're, you're purchasing a different, you're basically partnering with, with a construction firm on based on qualifications more so than sort of hard bid number. So you tend to be buying upfront a certain value and they, they get involved in the designing process and then become more of a partner. And there's approximately a 5% premium to that is what we've seen from an estimating perspective versus design bid build, which is very competitive, but you're buying drawings. You're buying whatever's in the drawings and specs. You are not buying the team. And it's a different process. And we will be evaluating in the next phase which, which procurement method we will use. So the purposes of the budget for now, we're carrying a higher number for the construction manager. We're, until we're able to truly do an evaluation on what the best approach would be for this project. So with that, that, those numbers that I've quoted, you do include the construction manager at risk procurement method. So to just give that a frame of reference, especially for the public who are interested in how this is going to impact their tax bills. I have been working over the summer with Christine and Nick on, on potential borrowings and what the, what the town's chair may be, and there's still projections right now because as we go through this process with the MSBA, there's all sorts of factors as to what the MSBA will reimburse and what they will not. So despite our 39.84% reimbursement rate, the effective rate was likely to be closer to around 25%, 20 to 25% when you factor in all the tax and all the other things that they don't reimburse for. So, so we're going to be working on that, but in terms of the, the average tax bill, working with Nick and Christine, we were looking at, at a, at an average home of $675,000 as a valuation would have an impact in the first year of between 850 and $900 for that house. And that would decline over 30, 30 years of the borrowing. There are other methods in terms of, we can make a flat rate in terms of how the loan, the bonds are advertised. But in the past, the town has done basically a flat principal payment over, over the period of the bond and then declining interest payments as the principal decreases. So that's what we've used to date, but still some more decisions to be made on that before we voted it down in the, in the late spring to ask for the approval on the bonding. So that's my quick update for tonight. Obviously, you probably have questions, so I'll turn it over to you that is not the answer questions.
Gus, do you have any questions for Mike? You're, you're muted, Gus.
Anyway, I said I just had, had one and I just lost it on my mind. I was writing some notes down, so I don't.
Okay, Mike, why don't you start with your question then? And Gus will remember his.
That was easy.
So I don't, I don't really have any questions. I think, Mike, you, you dealt with a little bit the question of reimbursement, but when you look at an overall project cost of 72 to 77, what does that work out to for the town share? Recognizing that we're not exactly sure what the reimbursement will be.
Yeah. Right now, my estimate is between 55 and 58 million for the town share.
Anything else, Mike?
No, I, I go to all these meetings, so I'm, I'm kind of.
You're up to date.
I'm up to date, so.
You're sick of me already.
Gus, anything else?
No, I, I did have one, and I'm not, I'm not even sure if maybe it wasn't that you, you, you brought it up, Mike. I probably, it was, I think it might have been the MSBA reimbursement estimate that I was looking for.
So I just, just to reiterate, sorry, Pete, before we get to you, just to, just to reiterate the process. So this, this next vote is really, it's not, has nothing to do with what the actual, we're asking the town for at this point. It's moving the project to one option that we then further develop, make further decisions about some key issues in the next phase are going to be sustainability. You know, how far do we go with, with net zero, net zero ready? Some of the things that we've talked about, those six decisions that we made in the next phase. And then really, we have to come to the end of the next phase and present to the MSBA a final schematic design report that has a full budget and scope defined. And that's really where we make some final decisions about what the true budget is and what the scope of the project is. And then once that's done, then that goes to the town for funding approval and the MSBA.
Actually, Mike, that was my question was just curious about how the net zero considerations were built into this.
So currently, we're, we're not carrying net zero. We do have alternate prices for things like geothermal, which are ground source heat pumps that allow us to go to an all-electric building. Right now, the premiums on, on just the geothermal would be around 2.2 million plus markup. So let's call it 2.5, just for reference. But there's a lot of decisions that need to be made about the overall systems. And that will occur, we'll get more detail from the design firms, those managing calculations when we, when we can actually finalize a building option, meaning, you know, which site and which building configuration, they can do more energy modeling to really understand what the calculations will be in other systems or sized, et cetera. So right now, the estimate, say, to go to geothermal, which would get us to what I would call net zero ready, would get us to what we call a low EUI or a below 25 energy use index. That would be the first step. And then to get to actual net zero, we would need to add photovoltaics to make up for the rest of the energy consumption or look at off-site energy agreements, sustainability agreements, power purchase agreements, things like that. And we'll, we'll have a lot more conversations about that. But the best approach for the town and that in terms of the PVs is, is really to bundle as much as possible. And I know Fred Davis from the Energy Committee is looking at other projects. So it's probably best done outside of this project and done as a bundling if the town does pursue photovoltaics.
So Mike, then I do have a follow-up question. When, when Fred brought in the selectmen from Lexington and they described their project, that project was built at no net added cost to the town. And there were a lot of incentive programs that absorbed the cost, but my question is.
When you say no, hold on, when you say no net added cost, you mean, you mean the photovoltaics?
I'm saying no net added cost for them to achieve net zero is what they, what they presented. So my, so my question is, and this may be just way too early to ask you, is are you far enough through the process that you know what Lexington did wouldn't work? Or is it just that we're not far enough into the process where we've actually even looked at that in any meaningful way to know how it might or might not apply here?
Part two. Okay. So then, then the next phase, that's where really where that'll occur. And I actually have been considering, and maybe you would be supportive of, of creating a, a small subcommittee of the SBC to explore sustainability options and to get into it, because there's a lot of work to be done there. And I know, you know, the Energy Committee has, has done a lot to bring forth, including some recent grants and things like that. So they're doing a great job for the town. However, there's, there's, we can't really get into any, any real depth because right now we have about eight or nine options we're exploring in terms of buildings, in terms of site, in terms of size. So until we can narrow that down to a single option and explore in depth, it will happen in the next phase. But I can assure you that it will happen. I still haven't seen what's behind the curtain in terms of Lexington, so I don't know exactly. I know what Mark Sandin said, and it sounds great. Call me skeptical, but I'm willing to be open-minded.
It's not entirely straightforward, so it does take some, some understanding and some study of what they did. I mean, they made up a lot of money by the batteries and the fact that they were moving energy usage to times when apparently the energy use is charged at a lower rate because they had these batteries. So I guess that would be my, my questions and my focus with you would be to, to not lose sight of what Lexington did. I understand from Fred Davis that Arrow Street is doing a net zero building in Bedford, I think, a school. And so that they clearly have the ability to, to get us the information that we need. So I'm hoping that they'll get that, and I know.
And just to, just to add, Pete, sorry to interrupt, but they've done, they've done a couple of net zero projects. They do have the capacity between them and their engineers to be able to get that solution. And I can tell you that I'm working with the town of Ashland right now. Their project is going net zero ready and they want a full geothermal heat pumps. And in addition, I have a colleague that's doing a project in Westwood that's exploring that zero. I have another colleague that's doing a project in Wellesley that's exploring that zero. And I'm doing comparisons right now, is actually working on them today just to sort of see how they're shaking out. Another colleague that's further along, they're actually in bidding for Westboro Fails Elementary School. And so that's going to be a net zero ready building. So there's definitely, I have a lot of information on, on what the initial costs are, what the premiums upfront are, and then, and then the ways to offset them, whether it's through energy savings or time or in terms of photovoltaics, it would be power purchase agreements with third-party suppliers.
And my understanding with the power purchase agreements is that you, you, you avoid the upfront cost, but you get less return because of the fact that you're not putting the, the capital into the project. The other thing that I would mention, Mike, and, and ask you if you're aware of is that I know that Kim Cullenane from EverSource has a, a program where they're looking to supply MOUs for people that are looking to do a net zero and they, they, they pay part of the cost. Is that something that you're aware of?
I've talked to Kim a couple of times on multiple projects. This is a new program that EverSource is implementing. We evaluated it for our project in Ashland that I'm working on. Right now, basically what it does is they look at large, large-scale projects and there's multiple programs and you need to decide, we'll need to decide which program we enter. We will definitely be pursuing incentives because even if we don't go net zero or net zero ready, we'll still be looking at a very sustainable and efficient building. And there's incentives for, for that as well. It's not just for net zero. That said, EverSource came up with a program to try to encourage towns to pursue net zero or what they call ultra-low EUI buildings, again, below 25. Their new program does allow for an additional $1 per square foot to get that, as long as the town does post occupancy testing. So basically, after a year, they come back and they test the building to make sure that you are achieving the goals. Most of the, the design around energy modeling is, is exactly that. It's a model. Even Lexington's, if you still don't have any data of their, that building actually performing. Unfortunately, because COVID came around right after it was opened. So EverSource is requiring this additional testing after occupancy. And if you prove it out, they add in an additional dollar per square foot, which turns out to be, you know, for a size of building like this, it would be $100,000. And that may seem like a lot, but sometimes there's an additional premium that has to be paid upfront. For the town of Ashland, it didn't make sense. We would have had to put in, you know, a few extra $100,000 to get that $100,000 back. So, but we'll be making that evaluation in the next phase as we go through on whichever source programs, if a program, et cetera, will pursue, but we will pursue all incentives that we feel are proper.
Well, and, and I will reiterate that I certainly hope that you pursue the Lexington model that Mark Sandin shared with us because it, it strikes me that that's, it was, I thought, I found it very convincing.
So again, and so my, my role is I'll bring you the information and you, you can help decide how, how the town should pursue energy goals because the SBC won't be setting the energy goals for.
Yep, but we need the data, certainly.
Happy to, happy to help there.
And any more questions, Gus or Mike? I know that we have a question from the audience.
I have one more. I have one more, Mike, if I, and again, I don't know, I, I'm not looking for a detailed answer. The, you mentioned that the MSBA reimbursement, while maybe the official number that gets thrown out is 39 some percent, the projection here is 25%. If I follow the process right, the things that would, basically, the reason that percentage goes down is there are certain non-eligible costs that get built into the design for a school that are not eligible for reimbursement. And that could be anything from exceeding whatever their standard square footage is to I think there's certain kinds, I don't know if it's design cost or things like that. In our case, say again?
So there, there are caps as well. So for instance, they cap the, the overall reimbursement on construction to $333 a square foot. And anyone in construction will tell you, we haven't built a major building like this for $333 a square foot in probably 15 years. The MSBA does increase that occasionally, but it is well south of where current construction pricing is coming in. They also cite, they also cap, excuse me, they cap site work at 8% of the budget. And I could tell you that every project that goes through the MSBA exceeds that 8%. Basically, the site is where every project is going to be different. And so the MSBA to equalize it just says we're capping it at this. And so, you know, some towns choose a site that's far more complicated and may have ledge, then may have some other implications that require additional funds. And they just say, look, we're capping it at 8%. So there's all sorts of things that factor in there on what the MSBA will reimburse. So the effective reimbursement rate is usually, you know, significantly less than what the.
So then my question was, and I don't know if you're even in a position to answer it, but in that lower 25% estimate, is that purely driven by effectively unrealistic caps on, on site costs and construction costs? Or are there, and I'm not, I'm not asking this simply to assume that if there is something we're doing that goes beyond MSBA standards, that's a bad thing. I'm just trying to say, it's, are there things that we're considering for the school design on top of kind of those what I'll call parametric errors that we are thinking about wanting to do here that help explain why that's so much lower than the 39%?
Yes, I will, the, the MSBA space summary template gives you sort of their minimum standards. And when you actually program out the building, there are some things that sometimes exceed what their standards are. But they, they then decide whether they're going to participate or not. So, you know, the town may say, based on our educational plan, we need, you know, a, a world language classroom or something like that. Or we need a gym that's larger than 6,000. And as long as it makes sense from the educational plan perspective, oftentimes the MSBA will still participate. However, sometimes when they say that it's beyond and they will not. So, you know, right now, we do have proposed a, a daycare as part of this project that would not be participated, the MSBA would not participate in. Now, in the grand scheme of things, that's small potatoes in terms of reimbursement. So the, the real driver of that percentage reduction has little to do, this project's fairly close to the MSBA minimum summaries. We haven't exceeded them by very much. There's only a few small locations. So I wouldn't say that that's the real driver here.
Thanks.
There was a question from the chat. Some Steve Varish is asking whether the renovation of the Dale Street School has been ruled out at this point.
No, it hasn't officially been ruled out. I will say it came in as one of the higher cost options. People often think that an addition renovation of an existing school is somehow drastically cheaper. And I can tell you that oftentimes it's more expensive. When you try to take a building from the 1940s and 50s and bring it up to current code, make sure that it's safe, make sure that it's going to stand up. Make sure that all of the hazardous materials that are in it have been removed. And then you have to deal with also additional costs for phasing and logistics as you get kids out of certain areas. You need to rent modulators to put them into temporarily. And the MSBA doesn't participate in that reimbursement, by the way, if modulators are needed. Those types of things, the, the, the projects for ad renos tend to extend out because of the phasings, you know, six to 12 months beyond what a normal new build construction would be. So oftentimes those do end up costing more. So those will all be, all the costs that, that I've discussed tonight will all be part of, of the discussion on Wednesday as we evaluate our options. But no, it has not been ruled out officially.
Chris, do you want to bring in the person who asked, asked us if we could, she could ask a question?
Hold on one second. I'm promoting Chris. Okay, just trying to get the unmuted video going here. Thank you.
You did it.
I did.
Welcome, Chris Potts.
Thank you. I had, I have actually, Mike's comments just generated one very specific question. And then I have a much broader, broader feedback that I just would like to share with the selectmen. Mike, can you just clarify just the one point? MSBA does provide, my understanding is points for his, for some level of historical restoration or renovation. Did I see that in a document at some point?
They do have a program for renovation that does increase reimbursement. That is correct.
Okay.
Dale Street School is not historical as far as I'm, as far as I understand it.
Okay. I just was wondering what, where that, where that fell with Dale Street. And then I just had, and this isn't really so much Dale Street specific. The Dale Street project really sort of generated this sort of larger question and observation based on process. But I mean, some of you know, I started this town newsletter and I did a sort of survey of, of people in the community that are subscribing. And it was fascinating to see that the number one topic of interest is civic and community engagement. People really want to, seem to really want to be much more involved in the town and in the community, which was wonderful to see. It's something that I really care about. And it made me think about how, from a process standpoint, some, some, how some of our committees come about. And I know that with the Dale Street, with the building, the Dale Building Committee, it was pretty much an evolution of the permanent building committee with a lot of those members and then some addition of the school personnel, which would make total sense. And I know that MSBA requires the expertise of certain professionals. I mean, that's part of their requirement of who's supposed to be on the committee. I, I would just hope that as our Board of Selectmen, we can, you know, I don't know whether this is something that we can do in this special town meeting coming up. But if there's a way that we can provide some, some type of clarity to our bylaws with regard to who is eligible to serve on these committees, how will the people on the committees be appointed? Because there is, there is confusion, I think, out there. We really don't have a bylaw specifically dedicated to the school building committee. The closest thing that I found was there's actually a school committee policy under their facilities planning that states that the town moderator is the one that creates the school building committee. Now, I don't, I, you know, our town moderator said he had nothing to do with the appointment of anybody on this, on the Dale Street Committee. But I found it interesting that that was in the school committee policy. And I think, you know, if we're going to try and encourage people in the town to be engaged in some capacity on town committees, in the community, that providing a more consistent roadmap of what that activity looks like with regard to our bylaws would be, I think, really helpful. I don't think that with our existing bylaws, it really is, you know, we do have the permanent building committee bylaw. And it may be just a matter of updating that with language to just make it really more consistent with our actual practices and what this school committee policy says. Because I just know that it would be, it would be great. I mean, other communities have actually provided an open invitation to the community for their building project or their school building projects to invite anybody on the community to put their hat in the ring if they wanted to participate. And as long, you know, to actually be, be a committee member. And as long as those key positions that MSBA requires is covered, it is, there is a benefit to having other people from the community on these committees. And given the level of interest that I've seen and heard about, it would just be wonderful to, to try and encourage that as much as we can. And can we do that through some language changes to our bylaws? And so I just throw that out there.
So I'll, I'll start with an answer and we did have a committee that we appointed to review our bylaws and with an eye towards improving them and streamlining and telling them what we should have that we didn't have. They actually just did a codification instead. They did something a little different than we asked them to do. So the task of really reviewing the bylaws with an eye on, on how they could work better didn't really get accomplished. So I think that's a great idea. It's, it's like everything, you know, you just, there's so many things to do. And that, and then all of a sudden you have a virus and there's, you know, everything is, you have five times as much work to do. So I, I agree that that's a great idea. I, in terms of committee sizes, historically, there was an interest in the, in the Board of Selectmen before Mike and Gus came along for limiting the size of committees. I, I had to fight very hard with my fellow colleagues when the Energy Committee was started about 10 years ago to let anybody who wanted to serve, serve. My attitude was that if, as long as people were interested and willing to spend the time, it didn't matter how big the committee was. And so that's sort of what you're suggesting here with, in opening the door to letting people be a part of the committee. The other example that I would give you is the Medfield State Hospital reuse planning committee, where there was a limit placed on the number of people that were actually appointed voting members of the committee. But everybody else that had expressed an interest was captioned a resource member. And, and they basically went to all the meetings, they, they spoke and, and basically had as much input as everybody else because they had a voice and a forum. And I mean, you know, some of those people were more active than the committee members. So there is a way to do it. Gus, Mike, Gus, maybe first?
Or just, and thinking about this specific example here. And I, and if I, if my memory's not serving me correctly, then you guys can correct me. But one of the reactions I have to your idea on this particular committee, Chris, is that this committee, because of the MSBA role, and, and Mike, you may be the one to even comment on this. This committee, because of the MSBA role, had a definition of who needed to be on it that was defined by the state. So I'm trying to picture if we'd had the perfect bylaw about how this school building committee would work. I'm thinking, and it would have been overridden by a set of policies that the state had specified that would have at least partially undermined it. So that, I'm trying to, I'm trying, what I'm trying to do, I'm not fighting the problem. I'm trying to picture what the solution in the bylaws would look like, given that this particular committee and this particular process has a pretty strong state influence over how, how it's played out. It's like, it's, I'm, I'm just wrestling with that a little bit on how you would capture that in a committee. To the broader point about having our bylaws be more specific, it strikes me that there are some committees that we have that have a defined business purpose, that they have something they're trying to get done. So I was watching as you were talking, I was watching Mike's face just to see with, when Pete was talking about kind of having an unlimited membership in the, in the building committee for anybody who wants to be on it. And my guess is he kept a very straight poker face, but my guess is if I were sitting in his shoes, I would say, oh no. You know, it's not that there aren't lots of people that want to be on committees. It's that when there's a business purpose to a committee, and I, and I would put the, the MSH Development Committee as a good example. That's not a public participation committee. That's a committee that has a business purpose. It's going to have to go through public review. So it's not like it's an autonomous committee. But if we didn't have a relatively streamlined committee, I don't think we would be able to keep the business process going the way it needs to go to get somewhere, you know, with some speed. On the other hand, you know, to Pete's point about something like the Energy Committee, that's, I, I won't quite call it an advocacy committee in the sense that there's a predefined answer and they're advocating for it. But it is a committee that's focused on trying to help the town move in a particular direction and in sensible ways. And I would agree with Pete in that committee, if you have people that ideally are knowledgeable, but at the very least are enthusiastic about doing it, I can see how you wouldn't necessarily want to constrain it. So the, the bottom line for me is it seems like there's some committees that require a certain degree of rigor and, and tighter control around what goes in there. And then there are other committees that probably would benefit from a more open-ended set of rules around who can be on it.
So the Board of Selectmen is, is a, a group that, that has a very limited membership. And yet basically anybody that comes to our meetings, we give them an opportunity to have input and to talk. I mean, I think that, you know, any, any committee could operate that way fairly effectively.
I'm waiting to see if Mike wants to say anything.
Oh, my, my, my question here is, is, and I'm thinking of the most recent bylaw that I wrote for a committee, which was for the Affordable Housing Trust. And, and we were, we were careful not to write it in such a way to paint ourselves into a corner where with all good intentions, you're requiring membership from certain bodies or, or certain representatives. And then nobody fitting that category has any interest in being on it. So when we wanted to have the only mandatory member of the Affordable Housing Trust Board is a member of the Board of Selectmen who are kind of stuck doing this anyway, right? We've already signed up.
Was that a bylaw, Mike, or charter? Are you talking about the charter or the bylaw?
It's a bylaw for the, for the, there's a bylaw in the town, I mean, it's a, it's a bylaw creating the Affordable Housing Trust. And so, and I guess my question, Chris, is, is this a solution in search of a problem, right? And is, is, were there people who were interested in being on the school building committee? For example, who wrote to Scott McDermott of their interest in being on the school building committee and then didn't have an opportunity because Scott was not the one appointing it?
So, so what I'm, what I, what I'll just to share my observations, having, having been to the meetings and hearing from different people and seeing how things have developed. You know, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not to, to Pete's point or to Gus's point in terms of, you know, having unlimited number of people on a committee, I don't think that that, that is good. I think that a committee like a school building committee, as I've seen in other towns, when they've put together their committee, even when they've gone out with open invitations to the community, they've limited those, those additional positions beyond what MSBA requires to things like, you know, maybe someone who from, from the Energy Committee should have been on the committee from the start. So they could have been up to speed on sustainability options from, from the very beginning. That's just one idea. It would have been great to have someone who could have been in tune with communications needs in the community right up, upstart, right at the beginning. And a lot of community committees like this just happen to have like one or two positions for somebody from the community, the community at large. So I'm not saying have it be an open, an open invitation to anybody that wants to be on it, to have a thoughtful, thoughtful composition for the committee. And I think the thing that surprised me, surprised me the most was to actually see the school committee policy that said that the town moderator is the one that created, creates the school building committee. And yet it was the selectman that actually pointed people to this committee and not the town moderator. So I just think that, that there needs to be a little bit of clarity and process.
Well, I guess my question, yes, my question though, Chris, is no, right? Nobody emailed Scott McDermott to ask to be on this committee, right?
Well, I, the committee just, no, no, I mean.
I mean, and so I don't think it's a, and I'm not trying to, I don't try to argue with you. I don't think it's a bylaw issue. Where I don't think there's anything in our bylaws that if, when this committee was being formed, someone had said, you know what, can we add some additional people to this committee? Who would have different areas of expertise beyond those that are required by the MSBA? I don't think there's anything in our bylaw that would have prevented us from doing that. I mean, I, Mike, or, or you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think the MSBA would have allowed that. I think when the committee was being created, the original candidates were proposed to meet the criteria required by the MSBA. But I don't think there's any reason you couldn't have had additional people on there. I mean, putting aside the question of size, you don't want to have a 45 member committee. In part because so many people would drop off, you'd have a hard time getting.
Right, absolutely.
But, but I, I, you know, I, a lot of times people propose procedural solutions that are, to what are really kind of substantive problems in the sense that this is something that could have been proposed at the outset. There was no obstacle in the bylaw to it. If there was greater interest in having people on the committee, you know, we could have solicited additional people coming in. It just, it seems like this is something that, you know, i- if we want to put a reminder in the file, a reminder in the board procedures about this, that might be an easier way to get where you want to go than having to go through a bylaw process, which again, can end up with an unintended consequence of, of, of having a, a requirement for representation and nobody interested in filling that role. And I think the Board of Selectmen appointed this committee because the MSBA requires the committee to be reported by the, be appointed by the Chief Executive Officer of the town. So I think if, if Scott had attempted to, in one of his various coup attempts to take over the role of, of the Board of Selectmen, if he had attempted to appoint this committee, the MSBA wouldn't have recognized it.
Right, but.
All committee policy, whenever it was adopted, you know, is not consistent, at least with the current iteration of what the MSBA wants to do.
Can I chime in for a second?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
I was unaware of this school committee thing. I can tell you that I've never seen that in any of the towns that we work for. As Mike noted, the MSBA does require the chief executive, whether that's a Board of Selectmen or a mayor to appoint that committee. That is required. Very few towns, if any, certainly none that I'm aware of, would have a specific bylaw regarding a school building committee, largely because they're so infrequent. So typically when it comes to building committees in general, there's a wide range. And trust me, I did all the research when I wrote the bylaws that we've incorporated for the permanent building committee in Medfield. Some towns go ad hoc, which means they come up with a project, they come up with a committee. Medfield has moved away from that thankfully. And we now have a permanent building committee is, is going to be required by the bylaws. And we, to, to Mike's point, we tried to be, you know, we, we had to sort of navigate the gray area, right? We need certain levels of expertise on the committee and the permanent building committee and on the school building committee. And so that had to be written in, in terms of how we approach things. Now, we can't guarantee that we're going to get the expertise, so it does leave in the flexibility. And, but lastly, I would just add that, you know, I've had, I've, I've heard from people before about how, oh, how they wanted to participate. And then when we've given them the option, they, they don't show up. So there's a lot of, there's plenty of ways to participate at meetings, even if you're not part of the committee. And some people are chosen to and others have not. And there's plenty of opportunity for assistant engagement. And to your point, I'm a citizen at large. I, I, I come from the community. Most of this committee is from the community. This is not made up of, of, of just school administrators. They're part of the committee. The school committee is part of the committee, the Board of Selectmen. We have a member from the warrant committee. It is a very diverse building committee that makes up a lot of different perspectives. That said, are there other perspectives out there? Of course, there's always going to be more. So if, if someone has a deep interest in getting involved now, I would suggest that you send them my way and I'll have a discussion with them.
Man, and I think also just, go ahead, Gus.
I just have one question and it's in reaction to something that you said there, and it's probably Mark that's going to have to answer this. You mentioned that the school, the schools have a policy statement about who's on the committee. And I'm sitting there thinking, even if there is a policy statement by this, I'm not trying to start a, a political fight here. I'm actually just curious. The, the buildings, the buildings, as I understand it, are actually a town asset. And basically it's the permanent building committee under the, under the authority of the executive of the town that actually is how the building, how school buildings get built in town. If that's true, I would think that a school policy about how buildings get built would be effectively a non-operative policy because it's the part of the town, it's the school department that doesn't actually have the direct authority over the construction of the tool, of the school. So it's, might be nice to have a policy, but it's probably an irrelevancy in terms of its impact.
Right. And I guess ultimately what I'm saying. Right. And I guess ultimately what I'm saying is, is there a way to, to, to clarify much of this confusion? Because I think that we have committees where we have town committees, like a plan, the planning board, even though the planning board doesn't appoint its own people, like the, its own committee members, it comes to the Board of Selectmen and it makes recommendations for people that it wants to have on the committee. So I don't see really this, and the Board of Selectmen usually often will, will appoint those individuals to certain, certain boards and committees at the recommendation of the, the committee members themselves. So I guess my question is, is that, you know, for the school building committee, even though this, the school committee policy says the town moderator creates a school building committee, it's not saying that that town moderator is the one who appoints the, the members. You know, the selection would still, could still appoint the members based on MSBA, but at least the town moderator would be the one that would bring the recommendations forward.
And the point, the point I was making is the school's policy is irrelevant. That's not a non-operative policy.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Shirel.
That policy goes way, way back when, to early in my tenure, when in fact there were no standing building committees of any type and they would do ad hoc committees. But as, as time went on, people tended to develop, they, they, they morphed into a more or less standing building committee. So, which, which culminated with, with Mike Quinlan's, uh, bylaw that formalized that because by that point we had an ad hoc standing building committee. Now, the school, the school building assistance has, uh, has transformed over the years as well and gotten more and more strict and more and more involved in the local building where they are providing funds because of skyrocketing costs. So it's gotten to the point of them very much strictly controlling certain aspects of these processes and make, even to the point as alluded to by Mike Marcucci, as to who was to make the appointments, uh, as well as, uh, the qualifications for people to be on the committee. So schools by themselves are unique types of buildings. Uh, the other municipal buildings, we have the building committee, but to some degree it's kind of moved because we're pretty much built on at the moment, absent some, uh, discussion on, on proceeding on, for instance, park and rec or something like that. But we, we've, we've just gotten through a whole round over the last number of years of municipal construction. And hopefully we're in kind of a rest period right now.
Chris, I would add, uh, to respond to your comments, this Board of Selectmen is basically open to any town resident wanting to be on a town committee. And we're often seeking people to step forward to be on town committees. The, the process has evolved into what you have talked about, which is that we are often appointing people to committees that are recommended by the committees themselves because the people have been attending the committee meetings or whatever. A lot of them are, are alternates on the committees, the planning board or whichever. And, and the, the committee knows the individual and, and has a vacancy and asks us to, to use that person to fill the vacancy. But generally there, there has not been a huge number of people that have asked to step forward to be appointed to town committees. Every year when the appointments happens, I publish the, the list of appointments and ask anybody that's interested to, to let us know. And, and there really is no response.
Yeah, I just, I just don't think that there was, there was a, the opportunity for, for others to join the school building committee. And I just, it would be nice to be able to sort of figure out a way to, to give people a guide for how that, how that process could happen for somebody in the future to be on that committee.
And we need to put a, so you want to join a committee tab on the website. They can click on it and send us an email. Cause I think that's, that's about the process that.
I mean, I mean, it could be very similar to the warrant committee appointments, you know, in terms of people apply, they get vetted. They meet certain qualifications and I just think it would be, there's really, there's no place to be able to, there's no place right now to say, I want to be on the school building committee to, to look at actual criteria or to look at a list of how do, how do I go about it? Who do I contact? What are the qualifications? Do I have to be a resident? Do I have to be a non-resident? There's just, there's no, there's no guidance. There's no, there's no document that, we don't have a bylaw that oversees a school building committee.
Right. But do you know people, I mean, you're hung up on the bylaw, but do you know of people who went and looked at the bylaws to see if they could be on the school building committee and found nothing and then didn't express interest to anyone? That, that's the, the trouble I'm having.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do.
People who went to the bylaws who wanted to be in the building committee, instead of reaching out to one of us, just concluded they couldn't be on it. I mean, we had a whole meeting, several meetings about appointments for this. And as Pete says, we are always looking for people to be on committees. We are constant. So if people want to be on committees, we got a lot of committees. And if people thought that we needed to have a different membership of the school building committee, I mean, that was an open, you know, th- this opportunity was available at any time in the process to say, we ought to expand it. We had the original appointment of the committee, the creation of the committee. That was an opportunity to bring up and say, hey, I'd like to have more people on this. We added people to the committee that could have been brought up at that time. I mean, like, I don't know that a bylaw is the solution. It may be that publicity, that these things are happening and that, you know, now is the time to get involved as opposed to at some later point is what we need to do. It's probably going to be 20 years before we have another school building committee. And who knows what the state will be doing then. I, I just would hesitate to, to put the energy into a bylaw and maybe the energy should be in publicizing committee openings.
Sarah Repose says the historical commissioning, that commission has openings now, just.
I saw that.
She should make sure, make sure that her, her inbox is big enough to get the flood of emails she's about to.
Exactly.
It was, it was interesting in my newsletter because I can see where people click. Those, those committee openings were the number one thing that people clicked on. So, you know, there, there is definite, there's definitely, whether or not they actually took the step to, to actually, you know, send an email to apply. But I, you know, I just, I, I just mentioned it because I, I think that there's, there is interest and people just need a little bit more handholding direction. And maybe some things in writing that helps steer them to the right place and the, to understand. I mean, I think because of the MSBA role, I mean, the MSBA document that we submit, when we submit our, the committee names for the town, they specifically say, you know, for you to sign off on those committee members and that the, the, the town bylaws are being followed. And in terms of the, of the, the, of the, not the qualifications of the people, but the town bylaws that stand behind it in terms of, um, you know, whether or not you're a town resident, you know, all the things that are laid out in the, in the great bylaw that Mike developed for the permanent building and committee. We just, we don't have a building, we don't have a bylaw for the school building committee and the MSBA, you know. Submit that document.
I don't think you need bylaw. Mike, I think the Affordable Housing Trust had a bylaw because it was a trust. Uh, I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah, we, we needed, the trust needed a bylaw because it, you know, it owns property and it has, it accepts property.
I, I don't think you want to be, the thing, the one thing that's confusing to me about this conversation is if I wanted to be on a committee, what I would do is I would go to the town website. I would go to that committee. I would look at who the chair of that committee is. And I would reach out to the chair of that committee and talk about, you know, my interests, what does the committee do? What do you need? Because I think Pete, you brought up that when typically when we're appoint, as selectmen, when we're appointing people to committees, I know speaking for myself at least, I'm predisposed to defer to what the, who the committee would like on the committee, because I assume they vetted them in a way that we, A, probably aren't competent to do, but B, certainly don't have the time to do for all the committee members. So there, there's a piece of this that says, I'm not sure why the bylaw is the way you would go because a bylaw is going to be inflexible and, and committees' needs can evolve over time. Uh, it seems to me the town website and going to the chair or, or somebody else you know on the committee of the committee you're interested in would be the logical first step.
Or maybe just a, so you want to join a committee tag and here's where you would start for your interest in a town committee.
I mean, I mean.
We used to have in, in the warrant, we used to publish the, um, the last page, there was the back page for the, for the talent bank. Which I don't know if anybody actually ever, I, I remember I submitted one of those. I never got a response and it may have been because I didn't qualify for the talent part, but I, so I don't know if anybody actually ever.
Same thing, same thing happened to me, Mike.
But they couldn't keep us out, Gus. They could only keep us out so long.
That must be that's the file Mike had.
Yeah. That was the Mike Sullivan talent bank file.
So Mike, my story is that when I moved to Medfield, I sent the, the town my, my resume and they sent me back a letter saying, please fill out our, our talent bank form. And I said, oh, thanks.
Do we have, I mean, do we, I mean, there is an, there is an unwritten rule in Medfield for all of our town boards and committees that you cannot, you cannot be a, a non-resident, right? And you cannot be a town of the employee. But we've, but there's, what I'm saying, there's an, that's what we've followed. We've asked people to resign from committees because they've moved out of town. So I, I guess, do.
So I would, I would suggest, Chris, that we're getting very far afield from the Dale Street project at this point.
I agree, yeah.
And I think that, and, and we haven't made much progress on our agenda. So, okay, if you want to bring this up, can you maybe mark it up for another selectmen's meeting down the road?
We'll do. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
And thank you so much for coming. I would make a couple of comments to our, our two visitors just on Zoom stuff. Mike, you're, I think your connection's a little slow and your voice kept breaking up for, at least for me it did. And Chris, I, I found it very distracting because your glasses were reflecting your computer screen. So I just, I'm learning about Zoom, so I just share what I learned.
Pete is the Stanley Kubrick of Medfield Zoom. Thank you, Pete.
You're not, you're not the first that's mentioned that. It's, it's not necessarily my signal is my computer event, so I need to talk to my boss.
Thank you so much for coming, Mike. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. I'll let you know as soon as we have a, a new date for you. I'll let you know.
And Chris, I know that we have some other things that got added. I don't know where you want to put those in, but.
I'll, I'll, I'll update that as we go through. Right now I want to take Matt Colley, because I had actually told him I'd probably about 7:30, so I want to apologize to him. We're running a little late, so let me just promote Matt.
Matt Crowley, Cutlets, discuss one day wine and beer permit request.
Right. And let me promote Sarah as well, who's been working with Matt on the grant.
Hi.
Hi, Matt.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, everybody, this is Matt's first Zoom.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Nice going.
Sarah, why don't you just give an update on the grant and where we are with Matt?
Okay, so you recall in June, we applied for a Mass Dodge Shared Streets Grant Program. We were awarded $11,500 to work on a couple of projects, specifically providing some Jersey barriers for the outdoor seating area outside of Nosh and Grog on the James Avenue side. And also, um, with Matt and creating outdoor seating area in the alley and around the alley of Cutlets. And, um, you know, when I was first reaching out to the businesses, talking about what kind of special needs they might have or anticipate, I was also asking about any creative or outside the box ideas that they had. And Matt actually responded with this idea about the outdoor seating. And fortunately it kind of aligned with the grant opportunity. So we were able to buy a whole bunch of Jersey barriers, which were successfully ordered today and get a whole bunch of, um, planters and bistro tables and all sorts of things, lighting and things like that for Matt's project. So, so Matt's going to be doing some outdoor seating, dining. And so part of his other idea is where you guys come in to, uh, so he's going to talk about his outdoor, uh, I'm sorry, his beer and wine request, because that's a little bit outside the box as well.
Okay, Matt. Give us an update.
Yes, so we were, um, thinking of coming up with a separate menu for the outdoor dining. We'll have about, you know, two, uh, four to five different appetizers, a couple of different sandwiches, same thing on the salads and then do some flatbread pizza. Um, also pairing up with Doug Polar from Polar BBQ, maybe doing something around, um, on Sundays with him a couple of times during the month. The one thing that, you know, from asking everybody that comes in and getting a couple of opinions from people were that, you know, the alcohol, which, um, you know, I, I know it's a whole other issue, but we're really hoping that that would be a added benefit for doing the outside. Um, we're looking to open just Thursdays and, uh, Thursdays and Fridays from five to eight and then do Sundays from one to five. And with speaking with John and Tim Larkin from next door, we were, came up with an idea that maybe what we could do is just do beer and wine, you know, there's no reason for hard alcohol. And for us to both kind of win on this side of the street is that you would be able to purchase the alcohol at, um, the beer and wine at Larkins. And then we could open it with receipt, um, at Cutlets. The, you know, there's, again, so the Thursdays and Fridays, there's 30 days in total that we were looking to open. It would start on September 10th and run to November 25th. Obviously we'll see how the weather goes. And then that, that would be it. So it's, it's 30 days, like I said. And, um, yeah, I think it's, it's, I'm excited to do it and I'm lucky that the grant was able to come through and.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Shirel.
So I'm hearing a couple of things. So from a clarification standpoint, Medfield does not have a restriction on bring your own booze. So people are free to go to Larkins and buy beer and wine and then bring it to, uh, his establishment. That's not a problem. It's not a licensure issue or anything other than, uh, being permitted, as with others to, to have, consume alcohol outside. If he's talking, and, and he can even open it, uh, under the, under the, uh, A, B, C, C, B, Y, O, B regulations, you just can't charge for that. If he's talking about the Larkin supplying him, there's two problems. Number one, if you're actually going to sell the beer and wine cutlets.
Mark, 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 he's shaking his head, no.
I'm shaking my.
You can't see, but.
Okay.
No, this would just be, uh, similar to what we're allowing happen at the Blue Tables that we have around town. You would purchase it at Larkins and then be allowed to have it similar to the B, Y, O, B.
Okay, fine. So there's no 30-day restriction. That's just a one day, it's not a one-day license situation.
Nope, we weren't sure whether or not we were going to do a one day or not, so that's what we put on the agenda, but.
All right.
Creative as possible.
Any further issue, Mark?
No, so this, so this really is simpler than it appeared at first blush.
Good, good. Matt, anything else?
No, no, that's, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, um, Gus, any questions?
Yeah, uh, so, so I think it is, it sounds pretty straightforward to me as far as the issue on the table. The only question I had, maybe Sarah and Matt, is the, you're, you're looking at being open on Thursdays, Fridays and Sundays. This thing involves Jersey barriers and tables and planters. Does that mean that, that alley is permanently closed? Does it?
No, no, so, um, you know, I, we, the tables that Sarah had ordered, they're, they're very light. They're just light bistro tables you would see in cities. If you went to Times Square, they're, they're actually the same exact chairs that they have in Times Square, just a different color. So it's just a round 22-inch, um, table, but then just two 14, 14, 16-inch seats that fold up. So we'll take them in every night or maybe get a Rubbermaid container, one of the bigger ones, like say you would put trash in and keep it on the side against our building. Um, and then the, so we basically bring it in every night, um, you know, roll. We, we ordered the flower pots, but underneath them we ordered, um, rollers. So you just roll the flower pots back behind the store at the end of the night. The Jersey barriers will be taken off, you know, taken apart, same thing piled on the side. Um, right now while the bistro tables are down cellar, so that's kind of, you know, they're very light. But, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's it.
I would just say for, oh, sorry, Gus, I would just say for, for my part, if, if this is successful, I'd be certainly happy to have you do it more. So I hope it's, I hope it's successful for you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Any more questions, Gus, Mike?
Doesn't sound like we even have any decisions to make here, you.
I think we're granting, I think we're granting a, a wine and beer permit.
I don't think we even need to do that, Pete.
We don't even do that.
Oh, that's right, they're not serving. Never mind.
It's just more to let you know what was going on and just in case we needed to do it.
Yep, okay. Matt, thank you. Matt, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Matt. That's it, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good luck.
Alright, perfect.
Next on our agenda, Chris, is that discussion about the special town meeting, do you want to go to that next?
Yes, actually, if we could just take Doug Pollard first, she was very, very last minute.
Late addition.
Yeah, I just didn't want him to wait until our next meeting, so let me just-
He was just mentioned by Matt.
Perfect timing. Let me just promote Doug.
Some of the audience will start getting hungry, though, with all this discussion.
I know.
I hope people, I hope people had their-
Some of the people on the panel are already hungry.
Doug, are you there?
He went in the other room, maybe. We took too long. I was interested to discover that he lives up near you and me, Gus.
Hi, how are you, hello?
Hi, Doug.
Hi, sorry, I don't have my video on.
Hi, Doug, thank you for coming.
Thank you for adding me at last minute.
Yeah, absolutely, why don't you tell us what you're planning on doing and looking for us to help with?
So I operate a Pollards Texas Q barbecue smoker, it's been down at Medfield Day and been around, been around the state for different festivals and things like that, and I kind of held off for a while while the COVID was going on, and now I'm ready to open up. And I was hoping to actually do something more in the lines of the state hospital and kind of draw some attention and traffic to that area. So I, what I'm proposing is to open up on the south lawn, I believe, it's across the street from the state hospital, so it wouldn't be near any of the buildings or anything like that, so we wouldn't have to involve any of the insurance precautions. And then I carry my own insurance as well because of the, the food vendor license. My proposal is to open up September 30th and run through October 31st, pretty much going Wednesday, Thursday, Friday evenings. Or actually afternoon evenings from about 10:00 in the afternoon till about 7:00 at night.
So 10:00 in the morning, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what was the opening on the afternoon?
10:00 AM.
In the morning?
Well, I'd be, yeah, open up about 10:00 AM.
Okay.
And is it just the barbecue that you're serving?
Correct, it would be a barbecue menu that we normally serve at our other festivals, ribs, pulled pork, along those lines.
And there's no, there's no alcohol involved in this service?
No alcohol at all, it's just, it's basically, you know, what we normally set up at Medfield Day and just distributing it out in this manner, in this location.
Yeah.
I wanted to do some other locations around town, but didn't really have the, the proper, you know, easements and parking spaces and flow of traffic without impeding any flow of traffic. I, I just figured that the state hospital, across the street from the state hospital, would be the most ideal place.
So Christine, the, I picture, so Doug, this would be, if you do it south of the hospital, it's, it's probably on top of Hospital Hill, as opposed to straight across where the kind of hole is.
Correct, more lines, more on the lines of the top of the, where the hole is, you know, pretty much right on Hospital Road, and where you enter the parking area for the sledding hill.
What?
You'd be in the hole?
I'd be at the top of the hole, you know.
Oh.
Closer to the street, obviously, so I could have the, the right traffic exposure.
Kind of where the kids, kind of where the kids gather with their cars in the afternoon.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, what I was, that's where I was coming from, is that that, if, if you're on the street, just trying to picture traffic flow and everything, the kids that stop there, they tend to park all through that and they use, they use that whole grassy area, although I think as the weather gets colder, there'll be less of it. On the other hand, right on top of Hospital Hill, so where you're talking about where you enter, just to the right of that, they actually, there's actually some branches to kind of keep people from parking too far in there. That might almost be an easier spot, both for you, but also for people to park and, and not be kind of trying to operate on, on a slanted hill. But Christine, the question I also had, I, I'm not trying to drive anything here, I'm just asking, is on the north side of Hospital Road, you have that big parking lot where the buses, across the, well, I don't know, they're not gonna be there right away. And then you have the big lawn, and I'm just wondering, Doug, maybe that's a bad idea. Maybe from the standpoint of exposure, you wouldn't want to do that, but I'm just thinking, gosh, if it was right there on the lawn, that, you, people have a lot of room, if they want to eat there, they can, but there's also plenty of parking, that's straightforward parking.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a, that's a great idea. The only concern I have with both of those recommendations, one where the buses were, there's a lot of trees, you know, obscuring some of the view, you know, from the road to recognize, you know, what's actually there. And then where you had mentioned, you know, kind of to the right where the branches are blocking people from going over, you know, over to the hill, I was just more concerned of blocking the view of the sunset that everybody's there to enjoy. So that's why I was leaning more towards the south lawn at the top of the hole in the hill, closer to the road. It would probably only take up about maybe a 20 by 10 space.
Okay, so maybe it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
I would say from my, my perspective, I mean, I, I would be comfortable kind of making the authorization a little flexible so that through trial and error, if Doug finds that one spot is better than the other, he can set up someplace else. And I'm sure if, if it causes any argument for anybody else, we'll hear about it otherwise. But I, I'd be inclined to say he's, he's, it's good to have him up there and, and he can kind of figure out what's gonna work best and what'll drive the most business and, and, and certainly he doesn't want to prevent anybody from parking up there and staying awhile.
Right.
I think within 15 minutes, you're gonna buy something from him, just what it smells like, so. So I, I would do it that way, I would say rather than sort of saying, pick a spot, he's authorized to be up there and then he can kind of figure out what works best over time.
And I figured that would, you know, being up there as well, you know, with the smoke, you know, that would, you know, minor smoke would be permeated from it and it wouldn't really, you know, hinder any of the neighbors around that area because it would be all dissipated away by the time it got to any neighbor's houses.
That's okay, Pete, Pete's like the closest there and he likes the smell of that smoky barbecue stuff, so you're okay.
It's, it's very hard to go to the selectmen's meeting at the townhouse because you walk outside at night and there's all kinds of restaurant odors outside there.
I'm okay with that.
Any more questions? I think that if you're gonna do it, Doug, you might want to have some cones to mark off your spot, although if you get there at 10:00, you're gonna beat the people that are parking there for the sunsets, for sure, so.
Of course, yeah, I have some cones for precautionary to be around the, the smoker as well as, well as caution tape. There, there's plenty of markings available.
Yep, and, and, and you've got insurance that'll cover the town?
Yep, I have insurance that'll cover the town and cover myself as well. I can, I can forward all that policy information over to you, to Christine if necessary.
Yeah, usually, usually we want a certificate of insurance, I think, probably.
Yep, definitely.
And I did talk to Bridget with the Board of Health and you're all set, Doug. You're up to speed on everything that you need to do in terms of restaurant service, COVID, all of that. So she was, had no issue with you going forward.
Terrific, thank you.
So I think, Doug, I figured out that you're my neighbor, because you're, you're right at Wehr Harding and Hospital Road. I think I've seen your, your, your gear parked there, isn't that where you are?
Yes, correct, right on the corner by Surrey and Hospital.
Yeah, I'm just on Copperwood around the corner and Gus is just up Harding from you, so.
Terrific.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight, good luck with it, sounds like a fun idea for the town.
Thank you, hope to see you soon.
I think you need to vote to allow him to use space at the Medfield State Hospital and then Doug and I can talk tomorrow about specifics.
Alright, so I would move that we authorize a license for Mr. Pollard to set up his barbecue smoker and sell up at the state hospital in the south lawn, Hospital Hill area.
Could I make a, a, another request, which is that we run this by John Thompson for the Building and Grounds Committee for the hospital and Chief Garette, just, just see if they have any issues, I don't think they will, but-
Chief said no, she'll be there for lunch as soon as it's open, and I did send an email to John Thompson, but it was late tonight, so I haven't had a chance to talk to him, but I will talk to him before I talk to Doug tomorrow.
Okay.
But, you know, anytime we can have additional eyes and ears up there is great for us, so.
Terrific.
Second office?
Just, just to clarify, you know, I, I assume that this is licensing from September 30th to October 31st as far as active dates? Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Mark Hujie, hi. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you all very much, hope to see you soon.
Thanks, Doug.
I'll talk to you, Christine, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Now we're on to the special town meeting discussion.
We had one thing, I just want to say, we were supposed to have a meeting with David Cashman tonight to talk about the rent. I do not see David here, so I will just hold in case he does show up later. He's been to our meetings before, so he knows we run a little late, so he might be tuning in later. So we'll hold that one for now.
But if, if he doesn't show up, Christine, at least I would be comfortable taking this up anyway.
That's fine.
Based on what was in the, the writing, no, if he, if he's gonna come, we might as well not, not make his Zooming in vain, but if, if he doesn't, I think-
Yeah.
If Peter, Gus were comfortable with that, I think I understand what the issue is here, so.
I am, yep.
All right, in terms of special town meeting, we've been talking about this for several weeks now, and I am at the point where I'm going to recommend to you that we hold on our special town meeting for this fall. And the reason for that is we don't have the full financial picture. I know that the legislature has told us that they can give us our Chapter 70 money and they can give us our unrestricted government money, but that still leaves about $125,000 worth of aid up for question. It also does not give us any of our assessments, so I feel like we'd be making decisions on where our budgets are going without the full financial picture. Just to give you an update on some other things, last year, we ran about $350,000 a month on our health insurance. We negotiated a change in our plan design with all of the unions. We expected an increase in our cost savings for this year and we are running about $366,000 a month. That obviously is due to COVID, we anticipated that. People are being laid off and they're coming onto our health insurance where they would have been on their spouses before. Given that our unemployment bill, which normally runs for a four-month period between $6,000 and $8,000, just came in at $80,000. So we are experiencing some increase in costs that we, although anticipated, are much greater than our initial projections. Given that, I just don't think we're ready. And that, taking that into light in terms of also worrying about triple E, a sunset at 6:00 on October 13th and an average temperature of 50 degrees, Scott McDermott and I talked today and I think we're forcing an outdoor special town meeting when we're not ready. The cost of a special town meeting is also upwards of $7,000. I don't want to, when we're in a budget situation, spend $7,000 when we're not ready to have that special town meeting. And I recognize that we told our petitioners who have special town meeting articles, we've told the Energy Committee, we told everybody we'd move it to the fall. I would like to ask everybody to wait until we have a better financial picture. I don't want to have a special town meeting now and then have to have another one in February when we get additional information or find out we have additional assessments. So my recommendation to you tonight is that we hold on the special town meeting.
Gus?
Just a couple of points, Chris, the, the, with those increased costs, does that jeopardize, I'm, I'm trying to picture, so that we, we have town aid and we have Chapter 70 funds that I think are gonna be better than we had estimated before our town meeting. We have costs that have gone up. Is anything in that dynamic, does any, does that in any way jeopardize, does it put us in a position where we actually have to take action to reduce budgets? You know, we had talked at one point that when we had the information, we might have had to go down. Is there anything that's gone on so far that causes us to think we actually have to have a meeting to reduce budgets?
Not yet, not yet.
Tax receipts are still coming in?
Yes, but that's the other picture, we don't know, we don't have a true count of what our local receipts are yet. We also don't know what our free cash amount is, we don't know where we are in terms of reserves. So without all of those pieces of information, it, it sounds strange, but I feel like we'd be going to a special town meeting with less information than we had when we presented our budgets back in June. I think we just need to wait until we have that, but right now, we budgeted money for the unemployment and we budgeted money for the health insurance, but we're, we're gonna be tight on both of those.
So then the, I guess the other question I would then have, so if the town, if the aid comes into the town and from the state, we've approved a budget, so the mere fact that the money is coming into the town does not automatically cause the budgets that have been approved, approved to go up?
No.
This is just money that's come in until such time as we finally do, are in a position to decide what we're gonna do with the money.
Correct, and, and then just to keep, I, I know I've said this multiple times, but I'm incredibly nervous about fiscal year '22. I think given the promise from the legislature to hold our local aid flat from fiscal year '20 puts us at an incredible disadvantage for fiscal year '22. I know Nick had some conversations with the DOR today, it could be two months before we have our full cherry sheet for fiscal year '21 and we're already in September. It's going to be a significant decrease, I think, in fiscal year '22 because they're using money to make up for fiscal year '21 and telling us that. So I'm really concerned about where we're gonna be for next year's budget cycle.
So I think for me, an added consideration here as well, I mean, if, if we don't have an imminent need, we don't, we can continue to operate the town and provide the services that are needed in the town without having the special town meeting. And so it, it's, it's optional from that standpoint. And I think we'd be, we'd be opting into a town meeting, dealing with potentially important issues that are long-term and asking people to do it, again, in this continued circumstance that is highly abnormal, where we're not gonna be able to have that many preparatory meetings together, where everything is going to be less than ideal. And you have people who are gonna have to be dealing with an unusual return to school situation, who knows what, what, how that will work out. And however it works out, it's gonna place additional strains, not only on our town employees, on our teachers, on our administrators, and it's gonna place a strain, obviously, on the parents in town as well. And so I would forgive a lot of people for not paying a lot of attention to what's going on. And I think, you know, to Chris Potts' point earlier, we do want to encourage engagement and participation and we're, we'd be taking up issues of interest to people at a time when they can't focus on them, for very good reasons, because they're trying to manage their households in this, this very logistically challenging circumstance at a minimum. And for a lot of people, it's challenging for reasons well beyond logistics. And so I'm hesitant to do anything of significance or substance that will have an impact on the town or reverberate well beyond this fall in, in such an abnormal circumstance that is not conducive to preparation and deliberation and participation. And so my, my view would be unless we have to, for budgetary reasons or otherwise, that we, we certainly not call it a special town meeting now, but we, we kind of at least have in the back of our mind that we won't be doing it until the spring. I mean, we may have to have a special to deal with the Dale Street issue, depending on the timing, coming back from the MSBA. I think we'll have a special on that anyway, it may be a special that's the night after or the night before the annual, but it's, it's gonna be a separate meeting most likely. But from, from a policy standpoint, I think, hoping for, we're planning on having the, the kind of substantive long-term issues that would be on our warrant this fall, planning on then being on the warrant in the spring is probably the best, the safest approach from a planning standpoint. And who knows, if, if there's some miraculous turnaround, what's this host of the town meeting in the high school gym in January, we reconsider, but seems unlikely.
Gus, any more input?
No, I, I, you know, where my head was going is, is there any way to, you know, is there any reason, not even just way, but is there any reason to try to do a town meeting to handle town business exclusive of a budget? And I, I don't think that makes a lot of sense, both from a physical conduct of the meeting standpoint, for all the points that Mike made around where the people's heads would be in the issues anyway. I guess the only question I'd have, so, right, do we have a readout on when we think the state will have, you know, in the best of all worlds, when would the state have the information we would want to, you know, at this point, be prepared for that town meeting?
So I think the information that Nick got today was best-case scenario, you know, two to three months before we, before they have a full financial picture to give us our cherry sheet for fiscal year '21.
So that's December, for all intents and purposes, we won't have that before the end of the year, that I think makes it pretty clear.
I just think we need the full financial- I just think we need the full financial picture of our cherry sheet before we make any changes to any of the budgets that we have. Obviously, if there's any issue, you know, the financial team and Nick are monitoring our monthly expenditures. If there's any issue where we're concerned, you know, obviously, we'll bring that to you and move forward. Just to clarify, the cost of reopening our public buildings, particularly the schools, which have been incredibly expensive, we're covering those under the additional Chapter 70 grant money that was given to the schools. They've applied for that. It's under review currently by DESI. But we also have been using the CARES Act to fund the reopening, which we're doing, you know, on a daily basis. So this, not having a special town meeting does not in any way impact opening the schools.
And we're still keeping track of all those costs because this wouldn't be the end of it. They may take the federal government two years to sort it all out, but we would have something coming back in at some point, presumably.
Correct. We have money coming in through FEMA, which was coming back as a reimbursement, and then through the CARES Act as well. And we've already received some of that.
Chris, my recollection was that the CARES Act was about $1,001,000. Do you know how far we're into that?
I think we're just about a half a million into that. Actually, I might be confusing. I'm sorry. I might be adding up my CARES and my FEMA all at once. So Nick was running the numbers. Say, he can probably give you a better picture of that.
No, that's right. It's about a half a million CARES money that we have tracked as of about two weeks ago. So it's not quite up to date, but it's all the way through about mid-August.
Yeah, so that's a lot. Okay, thanks, Nick. So my sense on the special town meeting is that I think it probably makes sense to hold off the way Chris is suggesting. I don't remember that there were any big monetary warrant articles that we had put off, so that I'm not sure that anybody's gonna be sitting on the sidelines waiting for money.
So, I mean, it puts some of the projects that we wanted to do as some of our goals for this year, obviously, you know, COVID impacting some of the, where we're moving on those, but we're willing to hold off on those. There's not a huge sense of urgency to get it done this fall, but I would want to put everybody in that position.
Yep. All right. You don't need to vote on that, do you?
No, we only needed to vote if you wanted to actually.
Follow the meeting.
And we'll provide an update at every selectmen's meeting going forward as to where we are as soon as we get that information from the state and where we are on our CARES and FEMA money.
Okay. Our next item is that Trailside Drive Online Wine Auction Permit?
Yes. Mark, if you can speak to this?
Mr. Sorrell?
Yes. So I got caught on muting and I didn't get the full question.
It's the Trailside Drive Online Wine Auction Permit.
Right. All right, so there's a bunch of stuff in that heading that has to be sorted out to make sense of this. There is specific statutory authorizations and exceptions to general licensure. One is a relatively new section of the general laws of Chapter 138, 19, Capital F, which allows basically charities to hold wine auctions. And so it doesn't address the online piece of it specifically. It's a general authority. It's a state license. In other words, it comes from the ABCC. It's their form, which you complete, and you send it to them. You have to be, you have to provide them with certain documentation that you're an eligible charity as to what the money's gonna be done with and how it is you're gonna run it. Now, the local input that this person is being advised is needed is because, as I said, the statute's not limited. It doesn't specifically address online auctions. It contemplates that you would have it at a physical location within a community, and that's why it would be important normally to get the input from the local community, that it was okay with them, for instance, if they were gonna use a function hall or a formal legion if it was still in business or something like that. But that's, as I understand it, this is being proposed to be done entirely online. So I think it's just a formality for the, if the ABCC is telling Medfield that the local license authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, needs to sign off.
Any questions, Gus?
Yeah, I guess I have questions. So there. So this is an online auction. I mean, it's for good causes, except that when you said a charity can do it, this is.
Only a charity can do it.
Right. And so what is, what charity is actually proposing this online auction? Who's responsible?
I think they're doing it for Pan Mass, as I saw it.
That's right. But that's not the Pan Mass Challenge that's sponsoring this. This is somebody who's what I'm getting at is this is not a charitable organization that's doing this. This is somebody.
They're gonna have to be. They're gonna have, because the ABCC won't give them permission unless they are. You have to show your charitable status in order to qualify to get as part of your backup documentation to the ABCC.
So my first comment, then, my first comment relative to the three of us is I have no clue what that charitable organization is. I don't think it's the Pan Mass Challenge. So that might be first comment. Second comment, with an online auction, what are the, I know there's rules, I think, in Massachusetts, like I don't think I can buy wine online from California and just have them ship it to me. That's a state-specific restriction.
Actually, you can, and that's a separate statute.
You can now.
I can now. Well, it didn't used to be able to.
There was a federal, there was a federal court case on that point.
Okay.
But anyway, that's a separate statute and a separate procedure, which is what I looked at in the first place when I saw this. But this is entirely different. It specifically relates to a charity's ability to hold a fundraiser with donated wine, and that's the process. So, yeah, you're gonna have to do it under the auspices of a established charity.
So then my next question is, if it's online, what provisions does a charity have to comply with to make sure that the bidders are of legal age? You know, like, it seems like there ought to be some kinds of controls, and certainly, a commercial business would know how to comply with the controls, but it would surprise me if charities automatically know how to do it. And the real question I'm asking behind that is, to what extent does our decision to endorse or support this open up the town for liability if they don't do that?
There's no liability relating to permitting. That's a specific exclusion in the Municipal Tort Claims Act. So whether a municipality issues or refuses to issue a permit, you're insulated from liability on that standpoint. Beyond that, those are questions for the ABCC in their evaluation here. And I had suggested in conversation with Nick earlier today about this. I don't know who she, who this person spoke to at the ABCC, because I don't believe they're manning their offices either. I think their their offices are closed and they're just checking in for messages. But Ralph Sacramone, who's the executive director, is like the guru of all this, all this stuff. And she should be speaking directly with him as to whether it's even doable as an online thing. But that's their license. It's a state license. So if if any group in town, who's a charity, wanted to have it at a physical location in Medfield, that's what the statute was focused on. It just doesn't address the online.
Let me try asking my question a different way. If we approve this license, and I, with apologies to people who are trying to do this, I'm not slamming you directly. I'm not intending to slam you personally. If we approve this license and the charity that does this completely blows doing it in a really bad way, you know, they wind up doing this in a totally irresponsible way, did I hear you say that it's between them and the ABCC as far as making sure it's done right?
Yeah, yeah, because if it's online, assuming this, I mean, it'd be a different thing if deliveries were gonna be brought, made to a location in Medfield and picked up, whatever. And those are questions that need to be asked and answered before you take any position on this, frankly. I'm, the information I have, which is second-hand, frankly, is that it was strictly online and didn't, wasn't gonna involve any physical, physical location in Medfield. But you should absolutely pin that down, because that would make a big difference if it, if it, if in any way, shape, or form it was going to be physically involved with the town, as I said, as an example. If the deliveries were to be made to this person's house or somebody else's house and other, and people pick up there, that's a problem. That's a, that's a, that's a transportation of alcohol without authority situation right there. So there are a lot of, there's more questions that need to be asked and answered before anybody, I think, can make an intelligent response.
Then my, another question I had, this is a bigger-than-a-breadbox, smaller-than-a-barn question. Do these wine auctions, are they like, we have 35 bottles of Chateau Neuf de Poppe from the realm of Louis XIV, and who wants to start with $10,000? Or is this like, I got a semi truck out here with a bunch of almond and wine. There's like 500 cases of it. Who's gonna give me 20 bucks for the first case? Is it a, like, is it a, is it a wholesaler kind of thing, or is it an exclusive?
No, this is my first experience with it. I wasn't frankly even aware of the existence of that statute. There's been a lot of that within the last few years, where frankly, special interest groups have tweaked the alcohol laws for their benefit. But again, what, the prototype seems to be for a charitable group to get donations of wine, because that's in the statutes and the regulations. It has to be donated, and then you have an auction. So I don't know, Gus. I don't, I don't think it was envisioned to be a 10,000 bottle of whatever chateau that was relatively inexpensive.
We are talking Medfield here. Only the finest wines here.
Hey, I participated in Elias Cobard auction years ago, so don't tell me about the taste in Medfield.
So Gus, my dad liked wine, so that the first wine I ever drank in my life was Chateau Neuf de Poppe. So there actually was a spreadsheet attached to the material, and it was just individual bottles that were itemized.
See, that's the difference between you and me, Pete. I think my first one was Mad Dog, but I'm impressed.
Does that have a screw top?
Oh, of course.
All right.
So the only, so it sounds like we need to probably have a lot more information. The only other thought that was in my head around this as a concept, not understanding how it works, and I don't think I do yet, but the only other thought that I had in my mind was if this was approved once, would, you know, does this become a favorite? You know, would we be prepared to approve 35 of these, because this suddenly becomes a great way for charitable organizations to make money, and are we okay with that? And clearly, this is a great cause, so I'm not, I'm not going after this on any of the merits of what it's for or the people that are trying to do this. I just, it is a new concept, and I'm not sure exactly how it works.
It could be a novelty. It's like casino nights when they first were proposed, and then the state came in with more and more regulations in response to abuses. And, you know, between that and the novelty wearing off, they've become pretty infrequent, so.
That's all I got.
Mike, did you have any questions?
No, it sounds like we're gonna get some more information on this. What I was sort of unclear about was like what exactly was happening in Medfield itself. What's happening here? So I think we'll get that more information.
Most importantly, where is this? I didn't see the list. But assume there's a list of bottles of wine. Where are they physically located, and how are they going to get to the successful bidder? We need to know that, and only insofar as, does it in any way, shape, or form involve a locality in Medfield.
And it sounded from the, what little paperwork we had, it's, maybe nobody knows, but is it Martinetti that's donating all this wine?
Apparently, that's what I read from it.
You look at the list of.
The statute requires the wine be donated.
Yeah.
If you look at the spreadsheet, it's donated by all sorts of different people. It looks like it's donated by each vineyard separately. The Martinetti people just seem to be organizing it.
They're just, okay.
So more to come then on that one, unless anybody has any further at this point.
So just to make this a constructive discussion, is it fair for us to say at this point we're not ruling this out as, you know, categorically as a concept? We just need to understand more about how it works. Maybe, my thought would be, it might be nice to have a written proposal from whoever is sponsoring this in Medfield that gives us a description of what this is and and basically represents how it's gonna work, so that we actually know what it is we're supporting or approving.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe they could come to the meeting and answer questions, too. Okay, our next action item then is an agreement with Metro West Medical Center for Medication Exchanges.
Actually, a lot of these. Actually, David Cashman is here, so I'm gonna, let's speak with him.
Hello, David. Thanks for coming.
Hi, David.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I was before you approximately a month ago, and I recognize at that time, my sense was that the board considered the matter closed, and so that's not lost on me. However, the last time I was before the board, I was asking for approval of 2020 sales prices. The board rejected that request, and it subsequently came to my attention that the maximum sales prices that were in the regulatory agreement were, they were just outdated. They were off by about $5,000. It was a mistake. I don't know exactly how the mistake happened, but I can assure you that that was just an error. I have emails. I have other documents that I went over several times, and I'm not quite sure how the mistake happened, but I do feel some responsibility for it. And so notwithstanding my acknowledgement that the board probably sort of wants to be done with this issue, and not hearing from me, I feel like I have an obligation to present it again. And so I did want to just say that, you know, we're talking about three units. If the sales prices were calculated today, based over the three units, that would be $38,700 more than what, than what actually has been agreed to. The developers not seeking to revisit that. They just want what should have been in the agreement back in November when it was submitted. And so that has been, I feel it's my responsibility to bring it to the board's attention and hope that we can correct the mistake that was made.
Questions, Gus?
So, actually, the only question I have is something that you just said now, because I thought, I think I understand this in a straightforward way. You gave us the, essentially the same numbers that you submitted for this meeting, correcting the error in the sale price. Those are the same. I went back to what you provided last time, and it's the same numbers. But it was, instead of what the attachment B reads right now, which was a sale price of $273,000 something, it's actually $278,000 something. The only thing that threw me off is you mentioned something about a $38,000 difference, and if there's only three units and it's $6,000 difference, that's an $18,000 plus or minus.
Oh, right. No, so I was just saying that if you were to calculate the sales prices based on 2020 income limits, which is what I had requested at the last meeting, over the three units, you'd be talking about $38,700 more. That's not on the table.
That's not on the table, okay.
For that. I'm not asking for that. It just gives you some sense of, I think they're trying to be reasonable and just correct an error.
Yeah. So the short answer is we're correcting an administrative error, calculation error somehow that the paperwork read $273,000 some as a sales price when it should have read $278,000. And you're just asking us to approve that correction by issuing an updated Exhibit B?
Exactly right.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is a scrivener's error, as the lawyers say. So this is, this is fine with me.
Thank you. And I just, you know, I included within the letter as an exhibit, the third exhibit would be, since the agreement has already been executed and recorded, I think the board would need to sign on that page, and then the board can either send it to the attorney for the developer. I've included the information there, or if someone wants to reach out to me, I can arrange to try and get the document to the correct person.
Pete, I think you have to sign it as the chair and. Pete, I think you have to sign it as the chair and do we have paperwork on hand, Christine?
I do. We can sign this tomorrow.
Okay.
So I I would move that we agree to amend Exhibit B to the Development Agreement from Medfield Meadows to correct the scrivener's error in the sales price as requested. And so it should ref- ref- read as two hundred and seventy eight thousand, four hundred instead of two hundred and seventy three thousand, four hundred.
Second.
I would suggest you authorize the chair to to sign any documents necessary to effectuate that amendment.
And we authorize the chair to sign any documents necessary to authorize that amendment.
Yeah, second that too.
All right, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. Cashman.
I appreciate it. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Okay, now back to our agenda, uh, action items, agreement with Metro West Medical Center for Medication Exchanges, Chris.
We're actually gonna hold this until the next meeting. We thought we would have the agreement, uh, from Metro West Medical Center, but we did not get it in time, so we're gonna hold on this till the next meeting.
Okay. Then our next item is to accept a grant of forty three thousand, eight hundred fifty two dollars from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the Medfield Fire Department and authorize the town administrator to sign grant documents.
This was the grant that Chief Carrico had applied for for additional overtime money if necessary, uh, to fill the third, uh, medic on that slot.
So I move that we accept the grant.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yep.
And Mr. Markucci, yep.
Can you also just authorize me to sign for it as well?
I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign for the grant.
Second.
Yep.
Peterson, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Kuchi, yep, 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 we're good.
Okay, next item is to accept grant of hundred thousand from the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Medfield Rail Trail and authorize the town administrator to sign grand app, grant documents. This is the second, second hundred thousand that they got.
I actually have Christian Donner here to speak about this. Let me just promote Christian.
Thanks for coming, Christian.
Yep, just took a bit. Um, hello, everyone.
Hey, Christian.
So, um, don't wanna keep us longer than necessary because we've been, I mean, you guys have been through this before. I think all of you. And, um, the purpose of the agenda item is to sign a couple of documents that are prerequisites for the town to be able to receive the grant. So it's a, it's a formality. I know you had some questions two years ago when we did this the last time and and then, um, they were signed. The more comprehensive, um, background here is that we have, um, and this is the part that I want to be brief about, but but if you have questions, be, please feel free to ask. But but we have now, um, we think we have the money ready to start construction. We have, um, the two grants that are about to expire within the next eight to twelve months, unfortunately. So this new grant has an expiration of June of next year or July of next year, which is brief. And we only have a short window to use it. The one that we got three years ago was before Mass Trails was reorganized and consolidated under the the DCR umbrella. And and that had a three year, um, expiration and also different money source. Uh, and those three years will expire in December this year, but they have indicated that we might be able to get an extension past that. And so basically, this is the, this is the last shot that we have at getting started with the rail trail in Medfield, um, because the money will go away, uh, in next summer. And, um, so I'm aware that, you know, we've been talking about the lease, uh, last, uh, December. And there were some concerns about the lease language and the increased coverage limits in the, in the, um, MBTA draft. Uh, the language that had been changed since Needham signed it and and James Goldstein from Needham has been in conversations with the MBTA, and I don't have all the details about it. But he has indicated that there was some movement and that they have been, that that they have shown willingness to lower these uh, or some of the coverage limits anyway. And in other cases, he has been talking to, uh, Sarah, and I don't know who else. I think Nick about possibly increasing the coverage limits and the, um, rail trail, uh, funds, uh, being used to cover the increased cost. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, you know, dramatic. So anyways, there is more to come. This is not what we're gonna talk about tonight. Tonight is really just about signing these two documents. And, um, Sarah, if she's still on, can fill you in about what they are and, um, and, um, that's my story, basically.
Um, it's our standard, uh, grant acceptance from the state paperwork.
So the only question I would have is, again, because the lease is clearly the one sticking point, I think, in the conversations I've had over the years. Is there anything about, it's it's very easy to accept getting money that comes through a grant. So at one level, it doesn't seem to me there is, this is a no brainer that will accept it. But my only question is, does any of the acceptance of this money, does it imply any obligations that we're?
No, there's no obligation.
Then it's easy. Okay. No more questions.
Mike?
Uh, I would move that we accept this grant and authorize whoever needs to sign, whatever they need to sign to accept it.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
Mr. Markucci, yes.
Christian, thank you so much for coming. Good luck.
Christian, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Have a good night.
Our next item is contract with Geneva Group LLC for NPDES MS4 compliance stormwater regulations.
And Mo is here to speak to the next four, uh, agenda items.
Hi, Mo. Thanks for coming.
You're on mute, Mo.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So it's our annual stormwater management act permit grant that we do every year. This is a little more expensive than, uh, our normal year. We have, uh, different requirements that are added this year, including, uh, sampling for our outfalls and a new phosphorus plan. But, uh, the same annual reporting that we do, some bylaw revisions that we need to do, uh, with the same consultant that just changed their name this year. So it is our annual stormwater management act permit, uh, contract.
Any questions, Gus?
Just one quick one. Mo, as I read the document, it seemed like this was approving the third year of a three year contract. So is there a base contract and this is just extending it?
Correct.
Okay.
Mike?
No, no questions.
Okay, none for me.
All right. So I would move that we authorize the contract with the Geneva Group LLC as requested.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, hi.
Next one is the contract with Niche Engineering, Inc. to study five intersections and provide recommend, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm skipping over contract with Beta Group, Inc. for the, uh, ADA self-evaluation for the town sidewalks, network and development of a sidewalk master plan.
Um, so I invited, uh, Tony Garrow from Beta Group, uh, with us tonight to to give a brief overview of the scope of work for this, uh, contract really quick. But, um, it's basically, we're looking at a, we did a self-evaluation for the ADA compliance for all our buildings. This is for our sidewalk network. It's to create a transition plan and a master sidewalk plan as well. But it gives us, um, an idea of, uh, what, um, what compliance issues we have at ADA and how to get there, uh, where we should be. So, uh, Tony, if you're there, uh, Christine, if you could add Tony on there.
Tony's here.
Hi, yes, hi, Mo. Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Tony.
Good evening, everyone. So the, um, sidewalk project, sidewalk and curb ramp project is something that's going to, um, bring the the community an opportunity to come into compliance with requirements set forth by ADA. The bulk of the project includes a really a a comprehensive field investigation of all the sidewalks and curb ramps located along town maintained roads. The approach to the project is a GIS centric approach. So, um, all your sidewalks and curb ramp features will be mapped, um, and allow it to be integrated with, um, your payment management program and other infrastructure assets, um, that you currently have, um, that have been mapped. Ultimately, once the the data is collected, now you have the opportunity to assess the information, develop a priority, um, list of locations through using GIS tools. For instance, the prioritization could include, um, sidewalks and proximity to schools, the downtown area, recreational facilities. Um, and then that allows you to identify where you have, um, gaps in the network and, um, extensions that could be made. One of the key elements of the project is really bringing your, identifying your curb ramps that are not in compliance. This is a, an issue in most communities in Massachusetts and throughout New England where the vast majority of curb ramps are not in compliance. So now you can set a plan to upgrade your curb ramps to compliance, um, through the development of a, what's called a section five oh four transition plan. So the project will include developing that plan, um, and a schedule of improvements that'll certainly, you know, have some budgetary items, of course. But there's really no restriction in terms of the length of the plan. So we see most communities have plans extend from fifteen to as long as thirty years, um, to bring all of your sidewalks and curb ramps into compliance. So it's an important tool to have for the community and it also will set you up for other ADA related grants, um, that are available at the state level.
Questions, Mr. Murby?
I had, uh, maybe two that are related. The the one thing that wasn't clear to me in what I read was, is this an assessment of existing sidewalks only? Or is it envisioning future sidewalks that are planned?
Yeah, um, yeah, includes the assessment of existing. And then as part of the analysis process, we're gonna identify where gaps exist in the sidewalk network and then where logical extensions should be made. So tho- those will all be digitized within the GIS.
Okay, then that ties into the second question I had is how does this connect to anything that the townwide master plan might be working on in terms of, this is probably a question for Mo, not you, Tony. How does this connect with anything that the townwide master plan is working on? Because I think one of the issues that they're looking at is sidewalk extensions.
Yeah, right. I think, uh, this is gonna be helpful, a helpful tool for that, to integrate into the plan. It's gonna, it's gonna give us a lot of information on our sidewalk network that we can, uh, bring to the master plan to incorporate it in, so.
Okay.
Um, it, Mo, if I may, um, we we're actually, um, covering the transportation element of the master plan. Beta's doing that work. So it'll be a night, it'll be an easy translation, um, and sharing of data from the sidewalks, uh, inventory and vice versa.
Two really good answers to my question.
Sounds like Gus has all said. Mike, any comments or questions?
No, I just wanna say, I I would say if you you categorize the things I get asked about, um, by subject matter, sidewalks is is near the top and and it's definitely something that, uh, we need because as the town has grown, the sidewalk network hasn't necessarily grown with the town. And there are places in the town that are, uh, important and people like to go to that are not accessible by sidewalks. I, I, the biggest one being the state hospital, you really can't walk from the downtown of the state hospital on a sidewalk, um, the whole way. And I think that's something that that should be a priority for us. And and getting the engineering details and getting this information is really the first step. So I'm glad we're doing it. I think this is great.
I would agree with those comments. Um, anything else?
I would, I would move that we, uh, authorize, are we, who's signing this? You, Christine, or us?
Uh, I don't know what this is. Let me see.
Well, it's a good setup for the selectmen. So I I would, I would move that we, uh, approve and sign the contract with the Beta Group as requested.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
We'll sign that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tony.
Well, yep, yep. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks for coming. Uh, our next item is a contract with Niche Engineering, Inc. to study five intersections and provide recommendations. Mo?
Uh, so these five intersections, I I, you know, looking through the town, the last four years that I've been here, uh, these five intersections kind of, uh, stand out to me. There are some other intersections in town that, uh, I'd like to look at in the future. But these five, uh, I would like to, uh, you know, have your support to to at least study these and see what we can get for conceptual ideas as well as, um, safety improvements, um, recommendations. One is Main Street at Bridge Street, uh, with that island in the middle. It's very, very confusing what to do in that intersection. I think it's a, it's a long time coming to try to reconfigure that intersection to make it work, uh, uh, to the needs of the town. Well, West Mill Street at Adam Street is another, uh, tough intersection that, uh, I'd like to see, especially when we're looking at, uh, redoing some of these roadways in the near future. Like to square some of these away if possible. Uh, Harding Street at North, Harding Street at West and Harding Street at Hospital Road. But I just wanted to run that by you first to see if, um, you felt the same way, to to at least look at them, to study them, to get some conceptual drawings and some recommendations from the transportation engineers that, uh, you know, are the experts in the field.
Mr. Murby?
So, uh, a couple of things, a couple of questions, Mo, on this one. The first one that what jumped out at me is what was not on the list was the, uh, West Street, North Meadows Road intersection and the South Street to South Street extension to, you know, the the double intersection there. You know, and not that I needed, wanted on the list. I was just curious why, I'm assuming they're being handled through different channels.
Yeah, the West Street at, uh, at North Meadows, where we're looking at, uh, already with the, uh, uh, state rep's office, looking into that intersection already, especially with that new development going in, um, uh, right there. So, uh, that one was taken off because we're already looking at that one. The South Street, um, the South Street at at one, at twenty seven, we haven't, uh, really looked into. I could add that to the, to the list. But, uh, it's, it wasn't, um, it just didn't, it didn't come up as far as, uh, as as much as he did.
There might not be a good answer for that one.
Yeah.
In an, from an intersection design standpoint. So that that was one question I had. I have two comments on two of the items, the two of the things that are on your list. The hospital Harding Street intersection. The only reaction I had to that is it seems like it, it it may be that this makes sense, Mo, so I'm not trying to say, don't do it. But given that we don't have the full answer on what's gonna happen up at the state hospital and the expectation that there'll be some sort of a traffic, once we do have that answer, there'll be a, some sort of traffic study. It seemed to me that no matter what we might do, looking at that intersection right now, there's a good chance within a couple of years, we're gonna have to do it again with with better traffic, a better sense of what the traffic flow is likely to be like with any development up at the state hospital. So that one I just snagged a little bit on.
Okay.
That, which is not to say, don't do it, but that just felt to me like, are you sure that's gonna give us an answer that's gonna be robust for very long? The other one is my favorite intersection to talk with you about, which is the North Street, Harding Street intersection. Like, my comment on that one, um, is not necess, is not necessarily to say, don't have it on the list. But the one reaction I had on that was in the scope of services on item three, it says obtained data from the town police department and or mass DOT on vehicle crashes within the proposed project limits for the last three full years available. That that stripe, which has still not been fixed, uh, has been up now for about three years. And so the only question is, can you get ten years on that one before you draw any firm conclusions? Because I think the stripe is the problem with that intersection more than anything, if we've had a lot of accidents there.
Well, Gus, they they did paint over a little bit of the end.
Yeah, yeah.
Three feet of it was painted over.
I have to take Mo on a ride with me in my car and he'll see exactly how much of that stripe I cut across because it's basically a curve that should connect with the curve going on up Harding Street.
That's part of, that's part of the reason we're looking at transportation engineer experts to look at this. And so it takes us out of the equation.
So my point though is, if you find there's, if you find there's a lot of accidents there over the last three years, I would. I would maintain that's because of how you painted the stripe. And that one particular one, you can get it for longer than that. I'd be curious what happened the seven years prior to that.
I will make you, I will make you a deal. I will get more information than just the last three years.
All right, thank you. And then the only other.
I think that the length of the amount of that stripe they painted over is now called a Murby, just like. The Mass Avenue Bridge, their measurements called smoots going across.
Right. The other, the other one was a technical one on the assumptions list, Mo, item number two. It says, uh, last sentence, for this reason, niche engineering recommends waiting. Until travel patterns return to a more normal condition before collecting and analyzing specific traffic conditions. But this contract is starting immediately. So I I found their assumption contradicted the idea of awarding and undertaking this contract right now.
All right, um, I think, I think some of the traffic has come back, but you're right, it's not, not at a hundred percent. You know, my, my thing is that we're looking at, you know, between capital and chapter ninety, we're looking at. Re rehabbing some of these roadways, and I wanted to look at these intersections to see what we can do prior to, so that's the kind of.
So I accept your judgment on that. I was just pointing out the contradiction in the in the wording of the scope. That's all I got.
Mr. Markucci?
I have nothing for me.
Um, I would just, um, make the point that a lot of these intersections are basically cow pads, I think, that got. Used as as hot, hot roadways and then got paved. Um, and years ago, when the state was looking to do their four hundred and forty units up at the state hospital, Rizzo. Did a traffic study and they, they just recommended that each of those three intersections on Harding. At hospital, at West Mill. And, no, West Street and at North Street, all just be T intersections. Ken Feeney actually offered to to make the intersection, he was redoing it at one point. And he offered to redo that intersection of Harding and North Street into a T intersection. And I got outvoted by my colleagues at the time to not change it.
Well, this is, um, this is going to be conceptual. It's not going to be the final designs or anything like that, so. Once we get the information and and, you know, I would bring it back to you, to this, to you to. Look at it and and give your recommendations after that to see which intersections we, you know, change or not change or, you know. But I think we, you know, for with the amount of traffic coming through town now, it's changed over the years, I'm sure. Um, it's probably been like that for quite a long time and. Just looking to make as much safety improvements in town as I can while we're doing the roadway reconstructions.
Okay. Good, thank you so much, Gus. Anything else that you have for us tonight?
Mo, I think you have a few other things on the agenda tonight.
Oh, we have to. Should we award this contract? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike.
Can we move to approve the contract with this niche engineering and authorize us to sign it?
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Okay, contract with MHQ, Inc. to purchase a new water utility vehicle.
This is part of our capital expenditure program. Uh, it's a, a new water vehicle. Water utility vehicle from MHQ is our state vendor. That we've, uh, we're looking to have a contract with them just to get the project started. Get that truck in in production.
Mr. Murby?
I have one point that I think Mark has heard from me before. It is beyond me why. A contract like this is written as a service contract instead of just a straight purchase. And and what we're, we're always torques me is like in, it's actually pages nine and ten of the contract. Which carries the termination clause. That basically says we can terminate this and the supplier will then, you know, let us know how much money we owe them. And it's like, it's a stupid clause that we're buying a truck. If we said we don't want the truck, this termination clause basically says, well, you don't have to take the truck. But you're still going to have to pay us for it because we've incurred the cost. So it's, it's got nothing to, this one's got nothing to do with you, Mo. This just has to do with my ongoing aggravation of what seems to me a totally inappropriate form of contract to go buy a truck.
Well, it may, it may be, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I don't know whether in this case or not, but in a lot of cases, you're not just buying this truck. When you're talking municipal stuff, it's it's customized. Uh, and I didn't know whether this was or not, so.
It is.
It is.
Yeah. It's about doubles in price.
And you need that termination clause in there because there are vendors out there that you might very well want to be able to walk away from a contract on. So maybe not with something as simple as this, but. Hypothetically, there's this way bigger, more complex pieces of equipment and vehicles and it applies, so that's a. That's a Franklin standard goods and services contract that's been adapted for vehicles and equipment.
If you were to have a problem with your trailer tow worrying or your whale and traffic advisor. You might want to invoke the termination provision. Is that what you're saying, Mark? I have a lot of problems with my trailer tow worrying.
We had a situation in Franklin where, uh, the, uh, the fire department was getting a replacement ambulance. And they, they added a bunch of stuff on it and it ended up because ambulances are built on chassis. You know, prefab chassis and then they customize it. And the, with all the add-ons, they exceeded the gross vehicle weight. And the manufacturer didn't, didn't catch it. So we needed all the language in the contracts to be able to resolve it.
All right.
Do we have a motion?
I would move, um, that we approve with some reluctance as to form. The contract with MHQ for the purchase of the for the highly customized. Ford F five fifty four-wheel drive utility truck with pride service body. Here and after referred to as program.
And I will grudgingly second the motion.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Markucci, sure, okay, let's do it.
Okay, uh, next item is an agreement to join the buy board purchasing consortium.
So this is the last thing I have for tonight, and I appreciate the time. Uh, so this is a, a national purchasing consortium out of Texas. We, we, we have the state bid list here in Massachusetts and we are looking to purchase a vector trailer. Almost exactly the one that helped us out in, uh, in our water main break, I guess, right near your house, Gus, uh, over that last year. Uh, the town of Hopkinton is also a member of this. Town of Mansfield is a member of this. And basically, they've done the bid process already. Uh, for us to go out to bid, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's costly for us to go out to bid advertising and. Uh, looking at bid protest possibly. When the consortium is already set up, the, the, uh, the equipment has already been bid. And we're just looking, it's, uh, it's free to join, it's, uh, for us and we could purchase just like we do off the cooperative in, uh, in this state. So it is a national consortium. Mark, uh, has, has looked at at it as well. And we just asked that we could, uh, sign up for it so we could purchase off it without having to go out to. Bid since the bid has already taken place in other states.
Questions, Mr. Murby?
So the only, interestingly, when I went through the paperwork on this one, my only question that I started with was, is this the school department? The only ones taking advantage of it, only because the the paperwork that came with it referred to school systems, but now. In light of the fact that it was your procurement or your request, Mo. Is, to your knowledge of this buying board, is this something that, it, it sounds like it's something that. The entire town could take advantage of. From what you know of it, is there anything that maybe the schools would want to know about it? So they could take advantage of it.
The schools can take advantage of it as well. It is made, it is, was started for schools, but they. Included municipalities and other organizations on there, so there's a lot more equipment and a lot more, uh, items to to choose from.
Okay, so, so then it's just a comment that. It might be something we want to make sure that the full town is aware of and takes advantage of if it has the potential.
Mr. Markucci?
Uh, nothing for me.
How about a motion then?
I would move that we approve, uh, this, is Mo going to sign this? Who's going to sign this?
I, I can sign it if you give me authorization.
So I would move that we approve the buy board contract and authorize Maurice Goulet to sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Just for the record, Mo jumped in there very quickly to sign that, so I think I'm facing a coup now, just so you know. We need to take your signatures. Mo, we'll talk in the morning.
Okay.
You can, you can dismiss him from the panel now.
I thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night, Mo, thanks for coming.
Mo, I'm pretty sure you get all those frequent liar points, though, when you sign it, so don't give in.
Thank you.
Our next item is a contract with Solar Design Associates for an interconnect application and smart application for the town garage.
Yes, this is, um, just a first phase of what we anticipate to be a longer term project. This will lock in the town's incentives on solar. As, uh, we in the energy committee continue to navigate what the best option for putting solar up on the town garage would be. Again, power purchase agreement, um, what? That this still leaves us room to make that decision, but we're going to get locked in for our incentives now, um, and get them working on the design.
Mr. Markucci? I mean.
You can go first, Mike.
I have nothing on this one.
I, I had, I think you answered one of my questions, Nick, so the, the, the phases two through six, that there's more that will be coming by way of expenditure. For that, we were only doing first phase here.
And it, the total, that, um, it would have to come back as a contract amendment, that's part one, and part two is, it may not be exactly what you see there. It had given us a price of about thirty six thousand dollars to complete all those phases they stipulated, but we still have some decisions to make on what, um, how we're going to move forward on that.
Okay, and then the only other minor administrative question, in the wording, it said that on top of what they get paid, we're. We are responsible for the application fee. Is that the five hundred dollars that's here?
Yeah, and then there's a, there's two applications, one to Eversource, um, and then, and as also one to Smart, so the town will have some costs based on. The size of the system will determine the fee for one, I mean, of most likely.
Okay, those are my only questions.
We have a motion then?
Yep, I would move that we approve the contract with Solar Design Associates as requested and authorize us to sign it.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, hi.
Next item is a lease agreement with AT&amp;T for the Midfield State Hospital Water Tower. Sounds like Verizon's already there.
We skipped over the health agent. That's right. Number fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen is first. The health agent one.
Not on my agenda. So what, what's that one?
Uh, this is the Board of Health Agent Contract. We went out to bid, uh, earlier, uh, this month, actually about a month and a half ago, and this is, we only received one reply back, and this is from our current Board of Health Agent. Which is Bridget Sweet, which is TSG Consulting. Um, and Bridget provides all of our septic engineering and our food inspections, uh, for the health agent services. Um, and I have to tell you that I'm not sure the Board of Health or myself would have survived during this pandemic without having Bridget on our staff. When she says in here that she's available twenty-four seven, she's not kidding. She's been incredibly invaluable to us, and so I'm, I'm very happy to recommend continuing this contract with her firm.
Any comments or questions?
No questions.
Questions for me?
None for me.
All right, so I move that we authorize, uh, the contract, uh, for a health agent.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
As parenthetically, I'll point out, this is year one of a three-year contract that we're approved.
Lease agreement with AT&amp;T for the Midfield State Hospital Water Tower now?
Yep.
Yes, um, this is the same agreement that we had with Verizon reprised for AT&amp;T. Um, as you all may have noticed, Verizon has been working there to get their equipment on the tower. They're hoping to have everything done by Labor Day, um, so we'll see. And then AT&amp;T, if all goes well, will be applying for the building permit shortly. And to follow suit to get their equipment on the tower as well.
Nick, how much are we getting from each of the carriers per year? Is it forty-nine thousand?
Verizon first year, I believe, was forty-two thousand this year, and it goes up two and a half percent each year over twenty-year term. Uh, in this case, it's starting the first year is forty-five thousand, likewise increasing two and a half percent over the term each year.
Great.
You know, Nick, the only question I had, in light of the fact that a month ago, we just approved, I think, a thirty-five thousand dollar contract mod. For the contractor doing the work on Mount Nebo, and if I understand correctly. The reason was because the, uh, the cell phone companies couldn't remove their equipment quickly enough. For us to be able to move ahead, so we wound up picking up a. I don't, a year, nine months worth of insurance for the contractor. I went through this and I couldn't find any terms that gave me any sense of. Confidence that that couldn't happen again. It kind of says that they have to remove the equipment if we need to do maintenance, but there's no performance standard. Uh, so my question is, is there anything in here that I didn't catch? That would give us greater confidence, we won't make that kind of thirty-five thousand dollar. See that kind of thirty-five thousand dollar charge show up on us, uh, if we do this again.
Mr. Chairman?
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have it in front of me, but there's much stronger language in this lease than there was. Going back to the time when we first did the Mount Nebo lease.
We have, we have grounds for greater confidence that that, this one, what happened a month ago or or this past year won't happen again.
Yeah, we just had the, yes, the, the Mount Nebo lease just had bare language in it at the time. Uh, this has much stronger language based on, uh, experiences and evolution with. Cell carriers and water tanks.
Okay, okay.
And I'll, um, to add a little bit of that. We had agreements with the three carriers on Nebo, and then the pricing came in for the scaffolding and everything kind of fell apart because the price came in at like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sixty days scaffolding, so. That was pretty much the, that's when we were at Lagerheads, we reached an agreement with our contractor and with the, with the cell towers now. The project's going to start at the end of September, we're actually going to save a hundred thousand dollars on the contract by using this different method, so. Long story short, we did get to a place where we're, everybody's pretty happy. And now on new, on new lease agreements, I'll be coming to you with Nebo, it'll have this better language in it.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that we were able to come to an agreement to actually have the project cost less. With the contractor after we want to pick it up a year's worth of insurance for him.
Right.
Okay.
Mike, any questions, comments? Motion then?
Sorry, nothing for me. I moved that we approve the contract with new singular wireless PCS LLC.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Murby?
Hi.
This is another one that we have to sign as well.
And I think you are on mute, Mike, but I believe, so you, did you preclude, the reason you only asked the two of us is because you recused yourself on this one?
No, um, I recuse myself from Verizon, um, but.
I didn't hear, you didn't call your name and you didn't vote, so I thought there was a reason for it, that's all.
Oh, no, I, I, I must have forgotten. Mr. Markucci also says yes. For, for the record, so when we review these minutes next August, we'll, we'll, I'll be in there that I voted yes on this one as well, so.
Mike's commenting on the fact that we got about eight sets of minutes this past week.
That soon.
Our next item, uh, we did the Midfield Meadows, uh, uh, so that we're down to the Midfield State Hospital Development Committee grant application for technical assistance for mass development.
Before we get there, there's also a green communities grant. Number seventeen.
I don't have those on either of my.
Must be sending them, you're sending Pete the condensed version.
Yeah, that's, you should.
I've got the green communities on mine.
Yeah.
Then two hospital development committees, then a local initiative purchase, sir, and.
Right.
Okay, somebody tell me what it is.
So this one is to accept the green communities grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Thousand.
Sixteen American US dollars and authorize the town administrator to sign the grant documents.
They probably just didn't put on your agenda because you're on the energy committee and they figured you knew about this one, Pete.
I, I did know about that one, yeah. This is the Green Communities Act money for our first, uh, our big first tranche of that, after we got the. Initial trance was when we became a green communities, then you had to complete the projects. And that actually took us a couple, three years to do, unfortunately, so we missed out on some. And that actually took us a couple, three years to do, unfortunately. So we missed out on some annual rounds of uh, of these grants. So it's nice to see our getting our hand in the tail now.
Yeah, I wanted to be sure that we extend our thanks in this one to Amy, um, who did a lot of work in this grant and to the members of the energy committee and everybody else who, who worked on it. It was really um, an impressive effort to get that done. I know they had to get in right before, um, right when everything was kind of closing. So uh, well done to Pete and the energy committee and especially to Amy for her work on this. It was great.
Yeah, good point, Mike.
So are we taking the money or not? Do we have any questions?
No questions.
So I would move that we accept the green communities grant, uh, and a hundred and thirty-nine thousand uh, and change.
Second.
And authorize the town administrator to sign the documents to accept that grant.
Unless of course Mo wants to do it, you know, saying.
Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Mark Cucci, yes. So the next thing on, on my agenda, Pete, is um, the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee grant application for technical assistance for mass development.
Okay, that's what I have too. I just don't have the Green Communities Act one.
And Christine, we don't have anybody from the development committee here.
Nope, I actually have Todd. He just signed on. Hold on.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thanks for coming, Todd.
Go on mute.
Hi, Todd.
Hi, Christine. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. How's everybody holding up?
Right.
We've had a lot of talk about barbecue and wine, just to give you a little context.
Okay, that's very motivating. So, uh, if it's okay, I can give some context about the uh, you know, the items that are on the agenda as they relate to the development committee.
Yes, please.
Okay, so um, and I realize that it might seem like deja vu all over again because we've had some discussions in the past about a consulting procurement and also mass development technical assistance funds. But it's, it's really all of a piece. We went out for consulting support in February, March and um, had a disappointing response. You know, we may have set the bar too high, but I think in hindsight, you know, we kind of targeted that more towards planners or technical writers than what we ultimately concluded uh, through some conversations with the selectmen when we were talking about bringing on MTC for legal support on an hourly basis is, you know, what we really need is a development consultant who will advocate for the town's interests on the hospital projects and not so much an RFP consultant, you know, somebody who could do both. And so over the past few months, we reached out to mass development. We had unsuccessfully applied for technical assistance um, in twenty nineteen. But we had learned at that time, they had a stable of what they call house doctors, which includes a, an array of different types of professionals, including development consultants, but also, you know, engineers and planners and folks that have other specialties. And we over the course of the spring, had a few other house doctors, you know, as guests to our committee meetings to sort of tell us more about kind of their views on the project. And in the middle of that, uh, mass development actually announced they were having another round for technical assistance with applications due September fourth. So um, what we've done on the committee, uh, be, we are now seven members. We've spent um, a lot of quality time over the past month or so developing a, what we see as an integrated scope of work that will get us all the way from RFP drafting to RFP issuance to developer recommendations, uh, leading up to uh, you know, potentially and hopefully a special town meeting. So we needed to break that into two parts. The mass development money, if we're successful, won't be available until the beginning of December. And so we uh, thought an effective way to go about it would be to break the scope into phase one and phase two, with phase one being a development committee and, you know, town procurement effort for the near term, September, October, November. And then uh, if we're successful getting the mass development money, we would use their funds from December onward to uh, to finish out that scope. So the two documents that are on the agenda are complimentary, but um, we have kind of the first part that's proposed to be a town procurement and then the second piece, if we are successful, would be funded by, by others, but that application is due on the fourth, which is Friday.
Todd, if I can, I'll make one more comment just to make sure everybody's got the sheet of music straight. Uh, you recall a year ago, we did a request for information in RFI. Uh, the process we had talked about was to issue an RFQ to get to identify qualified developers that we could down select from and then invite a selected group of, of developers to respond to an RFP. Mark, let us know that as a town, if you have a separate development authority, you can do that, but as a town, we're not authorized to go through that RFQ process. So from the big, big picture process, we're not going RFI, RFQ, RFP. We're actually going RFI straight to an RFP.
Any questions, Mike?
I, I have no questions.
I don't have any either. Do you need a vote on this?
I think. This actually, I think, Todd, on this one, isn't it a statement of support? That's required as the app was part of the application?
For the mass development piece, right. So I mean, what we're seeking is approval to issue the procurement for phase one, which is sort of the, the town piece, we would use monies already allocated for the development committee and the hospital project. And then separate and apart from that, we are you know, wanting to secure authorization to go ahead and submit that application to mass development by Friday when it's due for phase two.
So two steps.
Alright, well, if we need a motion to approve, I would move that we approve the request and issue a statement of support for the grant application.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Mark Cucci, yes.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank, thank you very much, gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks for your hard work and uh, Sarah's hard work, I think, last week, Todd, while some of us were on vacation.
Uh, great team effort. I mean, um, I think also expanding the committee to seven people is, is, is an immediate impact. So, um, you know, thank you all for your support for these past couple of months.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Todd.
Chris, do you have anything for us on a town administrator updates?
I just have a couple of items. Um, one, I don't know if you're aware, um, but the Park and Rec Summer Camp and the Swim Pond have finished for the year. And I just want to extend an incredible amount of gratitude to Kevin Rider and his staff. I don't know if you are aware, but most towns around us, um, and most in Massachusetts did not open uh, their summer camps and definitely did not open their ponds and a lot of the private pools didn't open this summer. Um, Kevin and the Park and Recreation Commission was committed, moving from basically from March forward, that we were going to be able to do this. And every time the guidelines changed, um, which was on a daily basis, um, Kevin, working with Bridget, uh, was on top of it and ran an incredibly successful camp and pond. Um, we know it looked different to everybody. It was definitely not our usual programs, but uh, I think everybody had a great time and I would just really like to thank his staff for, for really committing to making that happen for our residents this summer. I think it was really important. And also we put a lot of Medfield kids to work this summer, which was also great. So. Uh, the other thing I would like to uh, mention is our poll workers today. We had a tremendous number of poll workers at the polls today, most we've had in a long time. Um, processing, forty percent of our votes came from mail-in ballots. Um, and they had to process most of those this morning. So I just wanted to thank them for spending. I think most of them got there at five-thirty this morning and they're still, they're just finishing up now. So it's an incredibly long day for them. Uh, and I just want to thank them for their dedication and for being there for us. Um, a lot of our normal poll workers that we've had for years and years were not able to do it due to COVID. And we had a lot of volunteers step in to take their spots and it was really nice to see. So I just want to thank them as well.
Excellent. Chris, have you had any readout as to the uh, the turnout?
Um, I had an update. Let's see, I had an update at seven-thirty and we had uh, about thirty-seven hundred voters in Medfield. So.
Gee, that's pretty good.
Yep.
It's almost half.
Which is great.
Anything else, Chris?
Uh, no, I just want to, we actually had one more item on the agenda. Um, sorry.
Not on my agenda again.
Sorry. Um, this was the local initiative program eligible, eligible purchaser certificate, and this was for fourteen Turtle Brook Way. Um, this home in Turtle Brook actually sold uh, back in, I believe it was in February, um, right before COVID hit and the paperwork is just catching up to us now. But this is just a certification that the, the buyers were eligible buyers. They purchased it and the home is staying as an affordable unit. So uh, if you authorize me to sign it, I can get that back to DHCD and record it at the registry.
So I would move that we authorize Christine Truider to sign the uh, paperwork necessary for the fourteen Turtle Brook Way transfer.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Peterson?
Oops, sorry.
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yep.
And Mr. Mark Cucci, yes.
Um, and then as Mike mentioned, you received uh, an incredible number of minutes uh, in the last few days. So we will take that administratively and work on those if that's okay.
Yep. Uh, then uh, do we have a next meeting date, Chris?
We're working on that now. I'll send out some possible dates for you tomorrow, but I think we're gonna have to move our nine-fifteen meeting. So I'll, I'll be in touch about that tomorrow.
Okay, selectmen's reports then. Um, Mr. Murby?
I don't have the, uh, the, the only thing that was uh, new for me was the development committee and Todd filled you in on that. Uh, I had a nice vacation last week, so great mood for this.
Mr. Mark Cucci then?
So um, I'll echo what Christine said about the poll workers and everybody, the uh, Town Clerk Jim Mullin and the Assistant Town Clerk Tracy and Marion, and for the work everybody did to make that happen. Voting was seamless and easy today. Everything seemed to be running smoothly and, and I think uh, it bodes well for it happening again uh, in November. And I think everybody who wanted to vote early was able to, uh, hopefully that relieved some of the, the push as well, um, and the crowding and, and uh, it was, it's always good to, to get out to vote, even though you can't get too close to anybody and talk to them. But it was uh, it was good, good to see people outside holding signs and all the rest of it. So um, kudos to, to Jim and Marion and Tracy and everybody who uh, who pulled that off. And the Affordable Housing Trust uh, will, our summer vacation is over. We're meeting this Thursday. Um, and we'll be back into the planning mode for some of the stuff that's gonna be happening over the next, uh, next couple of years. So anybody who's interested in joining, we have two new members uh, of the Affordable Housing Trust Board who will be starting with us uh, this Thursday and the collective bargaining committee me, is going to meet next week um, to discuss further the ongoing discussions over the fire contract. So that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, I went to uh, the online meeting about the Dale Street School that the school department had and I went to a, a Medfield Environmental Action, I think is the name of the new group that Megan Sullivan and some other people seem to be running. Uh, they held a forum on climate goals. Helen Dewey is another one that's involved in it. And uh, the, the energy committee is, is gonna ask the town to uh, adopt some goals for uh, climate change actions. And, and the, the people that were at that meeting thought that it, the town should adopt a net zero by twenty forty uh, policy. The state is looking to do net zero by twenty fifty. Um, MCAP, uh, Midfield uh, Prevention Committee, Mary Cass is the new person, the new uh, substance abuse uh, employee. She's getting her feet wet on that. Uh, Energy Committee has met, they're trying to impact the state hospital and the uh, development there and they're trying to, they were working hard as, as people said about the Green Communities Act submission. Uh, but there are also some, they're, they're looking at the energy usage of the buildings in town uh, and trying to figure out why it's used, why the uses are what they are. And then the last thing uh, was the Medfield Foundation uh, Legacy Fund uh, Community Board met last night and is looking to, to talk to people again about uh, after hiatus about maybe donating to the endowment for the Medfield Fund to create an endowment for the town for future issues. Anything else that should come before this meeting?
Nothing for me and I apologize. It's my um, my travel schedule on the fifteenth that's causing the change. I actually have an out-of-state uh, business trip. Um, and so I'm, I'm hopeful when I, I return, I will be able to, you know, get a, a clean test or quarantine for fourteen days after I come back. It's, it's a new world of planning, business, travel and further meetings as to whether I'll be out of myself quarantined by the time I have the next thing I, I have to do. But um, I've got a drive to where I'm going and so I, I had talked to Christine today. And so if I did have participate in the meeting on the fifteenth, I'd probably be driving um, home um, that night. So um, hopefully we'll find a date that works with the, the schedule we have, but, but I do apologize for, for that intruding. Um, but.
Not a problem. We'll make it work.
I'll send out some dates tomorrow for you to review.
Great.
Okay. I think we need a motion to adjourn then.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Mark Cucci, hi. Good night, everybody.